I think we can go ahead and get started. We have Mike Bailey here today who is going to do our municipal budgets. Training, so. We will turn over to Mr. Bailey. He's done several of these workshops, training workshops for us. And it's helped Chris prepare as we go into our biennial budget. Planning and also our council retreat that's coming up. So I'll turn over to Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bailey, this is our accountant Bailey.
Yeah, I see there's a couple of us, so I'll try and stay in my lane. Talk about budget and finance. I'm not sure. It's the other Mike Bailey. I see Deputy Chief, is that police or fire?
Fire.
Fire. Okay, all right. So I'll avoid talking about fire as if I know what I'm talking about. So again, my pleasure to work with the city. So follow me and help you as you prepare for the upcoming budget work. I have worked with the city off and on over many, many years. And in fact, my first meeting was way back when City Hall was down along the river. And I worked with the city as they were thinking about potential. Improvements and annexation up on the plateau. So that goes back a long, long time ago. And then I've worked with the city off and on over the years since then. My, just briefly, to try and establish a little bit of credibility. I've got 40 years in the industry of professional finance for local governments, working with cities of. Here in the region, most recently with the city of Redmond, Washington, where I was 10 years finance and IT director. Retired in 2018. I now do a variety of things, staying very busy. My, I actually collected W two from the North Shore School District where they're working to align their resources. With their strategic plan and and I'm working to lead that project. I've worked with Association of Cities over the years. I was with MRSC, Municipal Research and Services Center as an employee for two years. Where I went out and kind of troubleshooted, trouble shot, whatever the right word is. Communities, local governments that have problems, financial problems and and so I did that a couple of years. And so. I've done this kind of work. I enjoy working with city councils. I have a passion for helping. Align what your work with your resources and that's a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight. The the budget you'll see in my presentation, you know, I kind of hint at who cares about budgeting? Practically no one. Who cares about making a difference in their community? Everyone. So. That's the way, you know, to make that happen. And that's again, going to be our focus this evening. So I have a slide presentation I will use to kind of help orient our discussion. I'm very open to questions as we go along. I have a fair amount of content to cover. And so and so I'll work to kind of make sure the questions don't get us off track. If you have a question, just if you would, I understand it's common practice for. To raise your hand using the tools here on Zoom. And if you do that, then I have folks that are going to help me kind of make sure I don't miss that. Because with me sharing my screen, I won't be able to see it. But feel free to ask questions as we go and and with that, if there's any, if there's no questions, anybody have any question before we get started? With that, again, some of you are recognized from before and and nice to see you again. And others, I understand, are brand new to this job. One of the first things that I heard from all the council members that I've worked with over the last 40 years is they were never. Quite aware of how much time is required to do this job well. And so. Thank you for spending this evening with us. There is a fair amount of time commitment to to doing this job well and and I'm sure you'll you'll all, you know. Find that out and do and do this well as as time goes along. So I've titled this presentation demystified, right? Municipal budgets demystified because unfortunately municipal finance can be. I'll call it overly complicated. It's a, it's too bad because it's so important to be able to connect. With you all who are making these decisions and then also your constituents. On how we're spending their money. To help provide the kind of community amenities that we believe they need and want. And so it's too bad that it's so complicated because because it'd be better to have this conversation be clear and straightforward. We'll talk a little bit about why it is complicated as we go along here, but. The, but but for, you know, suffice it to say that it is, it is a little bit complicated. So we'll work to demystify tonight, budgeting. And if municipal finances. Let me start off by framing the conversation just a little bit. And this is, again, I do this quite a bit. And so I've kind of. Got an approach that I hope works for you, but but it's one that I think. Is informed by all the work I've done with, again, a wide variety of city councils over the years. And in Redmond, we use this phrase, the best budget. And there's a lot of parochial interests that come into play in in budgeting. And we'll talk about that as we go along. And so how do we find the right path between all these various interests? And end up with the best combination of all the choices we could make? What is our best budget? So it's a term of art. It's not a science. It is an art form. It's, there's no one right way to do it. But people are paying the bills, right? Your citizens and businesses, they're paying these bills. It's their money. And we're doing this on their behalf. Their money comes in a variety of forms and we'll talk about different kinds of governmental funds and whatnot here in a little bit. But it comes in a wide variety of forms, but by and large, it comes from many of the same places. So they pay it in different ways, but by and large, most of the same people are still paying all these bills. And so doing that on their behalf. And doing it with a sense of strategic focus. Where are we headed over the course of time? Where, you know, what does the right goalposts? What are the right goalposts? What do they represent? How do we know that we're in correct alignment with that? Are we giving them good value for their money? You know, one of the criticisms we hear about government all the time is is about the value proposition. And again, a phrase we used to use at Redmond all the time, the value proposition. Can we explain that value proposition? To our constituents well, so that they appreciate the fact that we are taking this seriously. And are doing this, you know, work in the best way we can. How do we know what they want? How is it that we can be clear about? Again, the right kinds of things that we include in our focus for this budget work. And all these trade offs and balances that we have to strike is is really what budgeting is all about. So as I hinted at earlier, who really cares about budgeting? Well, you know, well, almost nobody. But everybody cares about, we want to deliver the right services at the right level to our community and do it effectively as we can. And I like to, you know, rightly say, you can do anything you want as a council member, you know, you can do practically anything you want. You just can't do it all. And so collectively, as a council, you've got to decide what are the right combinations of things that we can do? With what monies and resources we have available at our disposal. How do we make those choices? That's what this exercise is all about is is presenting the right opportunities to make the best choices. And then making those choices and then seeing those carried out over time so that we deliver value. In our community and as a result, the community is better off. So that's, that's essentially what budgeting is all about. So how do we go about doing that? And again, I like to use the GF Way, the Government Finance Officers Association. You see down here at the bottom, the GF Way is an acronym for the Government Finance Officers Association. I like to use their construct. I really think it's effective as we think about this work. Because it's got certain clear pieces that we want to focus in on. They're clearly a policy role. The council, as a council, you get to decide what the budget priorities are. And and how much money gets applied to each of those priorities. I like to say it in the frame, in the words, what, how much and what are the ground rules? So what is it we're going to go do? What are those priorities? What are those things we want to make better? What are those things that are less important right now? Maybe the the importance has has waned a bit and we can kind of dial that back a bit so that we can create more space. For the other things that have become important. And how much of that, you know, we get to turn the dial. That was again, a phrase over the years. We want to turn one dial up. We've got to turn another dial down. And in order to be able to be able to turn that dial up, we've got to find some place where we can turn a dial down. So that we end up balanced, you know, the process. And then what are the rules we're using to play this game by? And I don't mean to say game rightly, but I mean, what are the rules that we are using? To make these decisions. We call those rules financial policies. And those financial policies, again, policy is in the title, so it's got to be a council member role, right? What are the financial policies? What are the bright lines we're going to draw? That with, we're going to color within the lines and we're not going to color outside the lines. So I'll use, I'll come up with some examples for you later on, but keep that in mind. That's one of the important council roles is to. As to identify what those right policies are so that the ground rules are clear to everybody before we get started. And they're intentional. They're thought through. They're, they're, they're not. Kind of, they don't come up at the last minute. And and again, we'll talk more about that here in a little bit. So in addition to the policy role, there's an operational role. Once we decide what and how much, then we have to follow that up with, so how are we going to do that? And when are we going to do that? And with who? With what? With what resources? That's an operational role. That is the boots on the ground. That is the way you structure your organization. That is the way you deploy your resources, your, your. Personnel as well as the tools that you provided for those personnel as well. So. So the operations role is going to figure out how are we going to accomplish those things you've said you want to go do? And then who do we deploy to go do that work with? And so that's an important part of this as well. Clearly, we're talking budget. So, you know, finances are an important part of that. We'll talk a little bit in a, in a little while about how resources are segregated and certain resources can be used for certain things and vice versa. So which resources get used for which of these endeavors? That's an important thing for the finance folks to keep straight. We'll talk about that some more, it'll just a little bit as well. And as I said earlier, we're spending other people's money to do these things. So we need to be very clear. About what it is we want to go do. How we see ourselves going to do it, when they might expect something to happen. And and how that came about as a result of their support. So the communications element. Is really everyone's responsibility and it occurs obviously at various levels, right? As a policymaker. You want to be able to communicate to your constituents. How, you know, you prioritize this or that, or the other thing, the things you said when you were asking them to support you and in your. Effort to become a council member. And and be able to articulate how that's going to happen and when they might expect it to occur. And from an operational role, obviously, communication is important to the organization to be able to thrive. So communications is everyone's responsibility. There's a bit of a cycle to this and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this because we'll come back to the cycle here in just a bit. But let me hit the high low, high notes. Policymakers make policy, you know, again, so I try leave, please forgive me for that. That's. Something I guess I picked up over the years. And so that's important that that policy get provided at the beginning. If this is again, this opportunity that you're taking tonight is just that opportunity and you'll have more, as I understand it, in the next, in the coming weeks. To provide input into the things you hope to see in this upcoming budget. As a, as a mayor form government, your mayor gets to choose what to propose. To you in the budget that will come your way in the fall. But the, you know, then I've talked to the mayor about this, the best mayors I've worked with have been very careful to understand what the priorities of the council are early on. So that they can take that into consideration. And that's their opportunity in the next few weeks. To provide that policy guidance at the beginning of this cycle, not in in the fall. I've seen communities where the council gets a budget. They haven't had any input into in the fall and the whole thing just kind of falls in because at that point they say, well, this is, this isn't what's important to us. That's not what we want to do. The, once you get that budget proposal in the fall, you'll spend some time going through it and understanding it. It's an opportunity for. Staff to come and talk to you about what they do. And to help you understand kind of the way things occur out in the, you know, in the operational world. And at the result of that, you end up adopting the budget. And then once you have adopted that budget, then it's your responsibility to monitor and make sure that the things that you understood were going to happen. As a result of the budget really do occur. And getting reports about those things and tracking those reports, both financial reports and non-financial reports, reports about. Again, those policy initiatives that you laid out at the beginning. Now, the administration, whether it be a strong mayor or a city manager administration typically is in the role of proposing things for you to consider. So they oftentimes will propose and help get the policy conversation started. And and so that's, that's good. That's appropriate. And and then. Once they, this process begins, they develop the organizational strategy that helps make these things come to life. It helps these ideas, these initiatives, these goals come to fruition. Departments, of course, all have their own. Perspectives. Departments, as I say here, they can be pretty passionate, passionate about this. I worked for a city. Where a new mayor wanted to, actually. What's the right word? You know, was concerned about the department heads being too. Parochial in their interests and they weren't really looking at the best for the city as a whole and he and he was quite concerned about that. Well. You want department heads that are passionate about what they do. That's where they're coming from. And and again, that just makes your job all the more difficult of figuring out. How to find the right balance between all these various interests. But you want those departments to bring you ideas and approaches and strategies to help you accomplish the things that are important. And then it's their job, obviously, to turn around and make that happen. They're accountable for the day to day action out on the street and make sure things actually come together. That that provides service to the community. And again, make progress on those goals you've identified. And then, of course, I keep saying this and I passionately believe it, it's other people's money. How do you keep those stakeholders involved in the process? How do you create space for them? To have, you know, their hand on the tiller a bit and their fingerprints on what's happening. This is done in various ways. I'm not going to labor this later on, so I'll take just a second to say, a lot of times, communities will use surveys. They'll use some kind of a focus group. Those public hearings that are required by state law at the end of the budget process. Are not an effective way to involve stakeholders. At that point, all they get is frustrated when they see, you know, a finished product. On your dais and you're about to vote on it and then you've asked them for input. It's important to ask them for input early on in the process and again, help them appreciate the fact. That you're working on their behalf and that this is, this is something that you're taking into serious consideration. I like to think about this in those, in the context of kind of the traditional accounting reporting pyramid. So in a, in the accounting world. And forgive me, as a CPA, I guess I have to go back to talk and think about the world a little bit this way. You have this sort of construct where the, at the top of the pyramid, at the reporting pyramid, you have the top layer. Of reporting responsibility. You have. The broadest approach, right? You can see the whole organization from the top of the pyramid. You can see the down both sides. You can see the whole thing. You can't see it as minutely. You see it more broadly. But you see the whole thing. And again, as council members, as citizens, as investors in the community, that's your perspective. You want to be able to be responsible for the whole thing. You may have certain interests that are, you know, relate to you because maybe of your background or whatever. That's fine. Remember, you're responsible for the whole pyramid. And so you've got to be, stay at that top so you can see what's happening all around. And the information you need to be able to do that is a summary level information. It's that top of the pyramid kinds of things like briefings, reports. You can ask questions to kind of drill into something that's piqued your interest. But really, at that, at that level, you're at that point where you're looking at high level summary information. That gives you a sense that everything is like you expected to be at that top. And if you see something that's a little out of whack, feel free to drill into it. But drill into it to the extent that you get your answers, your, to your questions. And you satisfy yourself that things are the way they should be or that they're going to be resolved if if they're not indeed as they should be. And the example I always give here, our, our council at Redmond was always interested. And I said, I wasn't going to talk about fire, but it was always interested in fire overtime. And because fire overtime tends to, you know, be difficult to manage and depending on what's going on. And a lot of times, there's good reasons for overtime expenditures in the fire department. And so. So that's one place where our council would dive in a little bit and say, chief, come and talk to us about what's going on with overtime. It seems to have peaked again. And is that because of staffing problems? Is that because of certain kinds of incidents? Is that because of trainings that you're doing or whatever? And and then once you get those answers, then bounce back up to that top level of the pyramid and again, satisfy yourself with those high level reports. Now, those that are responsible for the day to day are going to need more detail. And as you work your way down the pyramid, you'll see that the chief executive officer and department directors are getting more detailed. They're getting. Not only those briefings and and reports, but they're getting into, you know, the accounting system and their other reporting systems that have evolved over the years. In the various lines of work and providing that level of detail that they need to be able to deploy their resources and and be proactive. And again, work to to provide those services that you're, you're paying them to provide and do that on a day to day basis. Down even deeper, you've got supervisors and whatnot that, you know, they're the ones that are looking at what's the status of certain purchase orders and. Has these built, have these bills been paid and and, you know, has that work been done yet? Has that work order been resolved? That's the minutia and that minutia belongs at that level, belongs with those people. So so that's, again, think about the construct is as, as you, again, consider your work and as you work your way forward. Of the reporting permits, stay at the top so that you can do that top level work. So I hinted earlier, the government, in your case, the city should have goals. And you should be able to articulate how you're going to achieve those goals. What are you going to do to make those goals become a reality? And the, the, in the old days, we thought about this, well, gee, if we throw this much money at something. Then that's something will result in some strategies and those strategies can have certain outcomes. But what's really happened over the years is that we've kind of turned that back around and said, really, what we want to do is think about, well, what do we want to accomplish? What are those outcomes that we want to achieve? And if those are the things that are important to us, we want to see that happen. And what kind of strategies do we have to put into place to make that occur? And if we are going to pursue those strategies, what resources do we need to be able to pursue those strategies, both financial resources? Human capital, equipment, whatever that, you know, whatever that means. So today. You know, 40 years ago, when I first got started, it was the other way around. It was all about the inputs. It was all about money, you know, budget and line items and details and things of that sort. Today. The construct is really flipped on its head. It's more about, what are we aspiring to do? How do we know the right way to go about doing that? And then how do we align our resources to make sure that that's where we are indeed spending our energies? And and so think about, as you think about this budget construct, think about it that way. How do we be clear about what it is we think success looks like? What are our goalposts? And how do we know when we've scored that, you know, score and it got that touchdown? So with the too many analogies and a bit of a broad brush and in kind of setting the stage, I wanted to stop just a quick second and see if there's any questions or any. Discussion about that at all. And then I'll go back and screen shares. Presentation again. Okay, seen done, but everybody still seems awake. So that's good.
Customer Vincent.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there are more analogies. They're, they're excellent analogies. Please keep them coming.
All right, well, good. I'm glad to hear that's not had a negative effect. That's good. Thank you. All right. Well, unfortunately, now it's time to get into the nitty gritty. And I warned you that was needed to be demystified a bit. And here that comes. We're talking a little bit about budget basics, kind of why we do this work. You know, what influences the way it gets done and done well. What are some of the constraints that we have to deal with? And then look at the budget development effort itself, kind of the sense of of timing. And some of the pieces that are involved there. It's going to be important that you're familiar with those pieces because again, at the end of the day, when you adopt this budget, you, you know, it's yours, right? And you own it. It's got your fingerprints on it. Yeah, you'll need to be comfortable that it's, it's been developed in a way that you're, that you're comfortable with. And and then a good budget document, one of the things that that I encourage communities to do is to be clear about this work. Through the development of a budget document. And and of course, there's a recorded hearings that we'll talk about and then the adoption of the budget at the end of the day as well. So why do we do this work? Well, first of all, it's legally required. That's not why we do it, but it is legally required. Nonetheless, it is a requirement. And we'll talk about that here in just a moment. As I have said already a couple of times, we're spending taxpayers' money. So we want to be accountable to them. We want them to be able to be comfortable that we are being transparent about the way we are spending their money. And in transparent about, you know, the things that we're using their money to pursue. So that comes in a form of, again, of goals and outcomes and performance, things of that nature. The budget is a policy, is an important policy tool. And I've hinted at that a little bit. We'll talk more about that as we go along here. It's obviously an important management tool. Those folks down a little bit on that reporting pyramid will use this budget. They'll have a copy of the budget either. Digital these days or hard copy. You know, very handy because they'll be using that as a point of reference for their work throughout the biennial. It'll become a very important management tool. And then, of course, the budget work itself by its nature is really a planning effort. And so it creates an opportunity for us to think about the future and to plan for the future. So those are some reasons why we do this work. As I mentioned, it's legally required. In your case, your biennial budget bolded there 35, A, 34. Is your RCW that relates to the way that you have to build your budget to comply with state law. States, the state has provided pretty prescriptive direction to cities, probably the most prescriptive direction to any. Type of government in the state at all for budgeting is for cities. And so there's quite a few RCWs that are required to be followed by cities who develop budgets. But all local governments who impose a property tax of any sort. Is really required to adopt a budget before they can impose the property tax for the subsequent fiscal year. When we think about budgeting in a different terms, other than the legally required terms, one of the GF ways best practices. A member GF ways Government Finance Officers Association, and it's one of the organizations I spent a great deal of time with. And working on this subject. So I'll make reference to them quite often. But one of their best practices is some work called the National Advisory Council for State and Local Budgeting. There is actually such a thing. They produced a book. I actually have a copy and and in the, this work is a bit dated now. It's from the mid 90s, but it's still, I think, one of the best. Frameworks for ways we think about this. And they define the budget as an economic plan focuses the entities, financial and human resources on accomplishing goals and objectives. As established by the policymakers. And I think that's a, it's a really good description of of what we're trying to do here. In your case, the budget establishes the biennial expenditure for all departments and funds. So. When you adopt a budget, you're appropriating resources. The term appropriation, you're making available resources for city staff to spend without a budget adopted. There is no legal basis for the city to spend resources of the, of the city. For the staff to spend resources of the city to accomplish their purposes. So you're enabling them, you're transferring to them. The authority to be able to spend city resources to pursue again, the things that they're there to do on your behalf. So that's, that's essentially what a budget does is it appropriates these resources. So you have an ordinance that you'll adopt at the end of the process. That ordinance will have these resources identified at the fund level. And and that will be what the staff will use and at the very high level. To to be able to go out and it's been resources and and accomplish things. So as I said earlier, there's a cycle involved here. And this is kind of, again, borrowed from that. National Advisory Council for State and Local Budgeting, I paraphrase it a bit. And when I was with the city of Lynnwood, we actually had this as our kind of planning construct. As I mentioned earlier, stakeholder input oftentimes comes early on in the process in one form or another. Touching base with the community in whatever form that takes, different places to a different ways. Developing some sort of sense of direction, you know, again, how, what, how do we know what right looks like? How do we know the things we want to pursue? And that's a collective effort by the council. I mean, there's different council members with different ideas about what right looks like. And at the. At some point, you'll need to come together and coalesce. And be clear about that so that staff can respond to it and present to you a plan to go do those things. So this vision, mission, strategic plan element is is your opportunity to do that. Doing that well really helps set the stage for everybody to be, find success in this work. So those typically are pretty high level, what the NACS will be the National Advisory Council for State and Local Budgeting. calls broad goals. I give you an example. When I was at the City of Everett, the city council back then, and that was in the nineties, was concerned that there was no residential development occurring in downtown Everett. Well, if you'll remember downtown Everett in the mid nineties, it wasn't necessarily seen as a really safe space. And so this developer, they resell to the developers and said, well, why aren't you proposing projects for downtown Everett? And they said, well, nobody wants to live there. It's not perceived as being safe. So they set a broad goal of making the downtown in Everett a safe place for for residential development. Again, a broad goal, long term, many facets to it and included public safety, obviously, but it also included amenities. And also the transit system, bus garage, if you might recall, was downtown at that time and it wasn't seen as a safe place. So it included transit. It included many facets of the city. And again, over a long period of time, and if you've been in downtown Everett anytime, you know, in the recent past, you've seen lots of residential development in downtown Everett. I think they were pretty successful. On pursuing that broad goal of making downtown a safe place for residential development to occur. That included lots of short term departmental goals, right? And all those departments that were involved had to propose a way to contribute to this. And that was that was took the form of those short term departmental objectives. If we can provide this kind of direction to staff, then staff can, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, staff can kind of pull that together into a call to budget memo. And and again, those of us in the finance business, we call, we have this phrase, you know, a call to budget. And and that's essentially the packet we hand out to departmental staff that says, here are the things that we think are important for us to focus on over the coming years. And it's because it comes from this work. So that translates into becoming direction to staff who will go out and prepare you know, ways that we could do this work and and they'll put their budget proposals together with that idea in mind. That comes back to the council in the fall in the form of a proposed preliminary budget from the chief administrative officer in your case, the mayor. And and the council will have workshops and discussions and and assure, you know, kind of confirm that things are are in alignment like you had asked. And and then adopt a budget. And once that budget is put into place, then you need to create ways to monitor the results, not only the financial results. Our rate revenues coming in as we'd hoped and are we spending money in a way that will see us through the biennium? But also the non financial results, are we making progress in those initiatives? And then if we find that we need to make adjustments, then especially in a biennial budget world, we can adjust as necessary. So that's a bit of the of the cycle that is involved in this in this work. So I've made reference to this in the past already. I really like this phrase that National Advisory Council uses this establish broad goals. The NACS LB work is made up of of four, I forget what they call them, but you know, four sort of broad elements. And then each of those elements are broke further broken down. And the first broad element is establish broad goals, you know, be very clear about how you want to guide that decision making that's going to occur, that's going to form this work throughout the rest of the of the effort here. There's a lot of organizational energy that's invested in making this you know, work good. And and it's unfortunate if if that energy is again not as as effective as it could otherwise be. And again, starting with those broad goals is a great place to help get that off on the on the right foot. Sometimes those broad goals can be kind of general. I've got some examples here in a bit. You know, for instance, at Redmond, we had a priority based budget approach and feel free to take a look at Redmond's budget. They still do that. I left there in eighteen, but they still use the same approach now. And so we had, as I recall, six broad priorities. Redmond, we called the broad goals priorities. And again, they're nothing. They're not rocket science. They're like, you know, public safety and and, you know, strong infrastructure, a strong business environment, things like that, not rocket science, but but again, helps create that construct that we could build off of and and drill into and help add more detail and context as we go along. Here's one of those examples I promised, and this is not anything I've shared with the city at this point yet. I do peer review work for GFW. And so I look at lots of budgets over the course of time, and I just looked at this one this morning from Rolet, Texas. I presume you pronounce that roulette, but anyways, and here's an example, you know, here's their strategies. And again, it's not, it's not intended that we would read all this and whatnot, but this is to give you a sense of they have seven key priority areas, right? Seven key buckets. And then within those seven, they've identified certain elements that they think are going to be really important as to how do we, how do we characterize this focus area as being, you know, pursued effectively? What are the things that we're looking for here? This is based on their vision for the future and their mission, the values, you know, who are they as an organization? What, you know, what, what kind of a culture do they have? And then here are the key things. And then each one of those is supported by by some examples of the kinds of ways we want to pursue that. In looking at the role at Texas budget this morning, I was kind of thinking about so call me as I was looking at it because I would recommend that somebody that's interested in in looking at a good example, not just in this particular context, but all beyond this, take a look, a quick look at the way they've done their work there. The resulting work is very clear, is a very clear communication tool. To those of us that kind of want to know what's going on in Rolet and kind of, you know, how, so what are they focused on? Why are they focused on those things? How are they deploying their resources to go do those kinds of things? What are they doing to evaluate progress? You know, again, performance, how are we evaluating performance and progress? They do a nice job. So that's a budget I'd recommend you take a look at if if you're interested. The other one that I always recommend and continue to do an outstanding job, I think one of the best in the country is in Renton, Washington. And I don't say that just because I worked there at some point in the past, but but we got something started there that Dave since run with and they've done a great job with it. And again, very much oriented around this kind of a mindset. What are those key priorities that we're pursuing? How are we going by doing it? How do we know we're doing it well? How do we line those priorities up and the work that's involved in those things with our resources? I always recommend the City of Renton budget is a place to take a look at that as well as see how this work is done very well and characterized in a way that is very clearly understood by others. A lot of times I get asked about, you know, all the other planning work that goes on in cities, right? There's lots of other planning work that you as a council will be doing or asked to do here in the near future. One of the common, more common examples is a comprehensive plan. I see that's not on this particular list, but there's lots of plans that you'll be adopting. I remember when I first got to Redmond, a good friend of mine, Craig Larson, was a parks director. Matter of fact, Craig kind of helped recruit me there. And and Craig and his crew had just gotten the council to adopt their parks plan. And they were very proud of the fact that council adopted a park plan and they gave them all sorts of accolades for having done that well. And so they came to me and they said, the council just adopted our park plan. And I said, that's great. And they said, well, now we need three hundred million dollars because that's how much it's going to cost. And I said, the council loves you. They love your plan, but they're not going to give you three hundred million dollars. Because all these things are competing against each other, right? For these same resources. And so while the park plan talked about the ideal park perspective and that ideal plan would be three hundred million dollars. In the meantime, it's pitted against all these other interests and needs in the community that are competing for these same resources. So that's an important part of the context, but but each of these kind of plays a role. And and one doesn't necessarily take, you know, center stage while the others all back off. You've got to balance all these things against each other and figure out how do we balance these needs? And end up deploying the resources that we have at our disposal to make as much progress as we can in each one, depending on, again, how they how they stack up against each other. And and quite honestly, and people, some people don't like to think about it this way. But really, your job is to stratify these needs. You've got to think about, you know, what comes first, what comes second, what comes third? And then we can go back and do a little bit more. What was second? Because we really liked that one, but we couldn't, you know, put off, we couldn't do everything there and then without getting to number three first. So so this idea of stratifying all these interests and needs over time is really the hard work that that is the council's responsibility. And and again, these things all kind of pit against each other and really, you know, help create a complete community, right? All these things are important in a complete community. But by the same token, you've got to find the right balance between all these different interests. So I talked earlier on about one of the responsibilities of the council is to talk, is to create the ground rules by which this work occurs. And I mentioned earlier that this is the financial policy work. I understand that's going to be some work around financial policies coming your way here relatively soon. And so think about it in this way, right? We're drawing the lines within which we want our staff to work and outside the lines is out of bounds and inside the lines is appropriate and what we're looking for. So some examples of that kind of work here on this slide. For instance, one of the common questions, matter of fact, this at GFW, this was the most common question that they get asked by communities. There's twenty four thousand members of the GFW around the US and Canada. And the most common question they had asked was, well, how much money should we have in the bank at the end of a budget year? What should our fund balances be? And and the answer was completely accurate, but not satisfactory, not satisfying. It was, it depends. And it really depends on a lot of things. And you'll talk about this as you talk about your financial policy work. But again, this is a great example of the kind of policymaking that is important to do in as an art form and not a science, because it does depend. It depends on how stable your resources are. It depends on how stable you think the environment, the financial environment is. It depends on what the nature of that resources are. When I first worked the city, a lot of the money was going to be development related, right? As a lot of the development occurred up on the plateau, that's not sustainable. So all those things have to come into play to answer, to come up with the right answer for how much money should we have in the bank at the end of a budget period, right? How much money should we set aside? So GFW, and again, I'll finish this thought, but GFW said, well, it depends, but as a general rule, you want to have two months worth of operating, you know, operations, two months of expenditure, you know, balance about what would that be about eighteen percent or so of of expenditures at the end of the at the end of the budget still in the bank so that you can draw upon it if you need to for cash flow purposes. And also unforeseen circumstances, a lot of various things that could pull against those balances that we wouldn't be able to anticipate. Working capital reserves can be, you know, either built into that or can be an addition to that. And and Redmond, again, by way of example, we had eight percent is our rock solid fund balance, you know, eight percent required a majority, a super majority of the council before we could spend into that eight percent fund balance. Beyond above that was another four percent of working capital. In other words, if things, if something happened and we found ourselves needing to dip into the the cookie jar to address it, then we had that four percent that was before we got to the eight percent. So we had a total of twelve less than the eighteen that GFW said, but that's the way they, you know, the city council there after a lot of discussion and some it was a great council, so a very thoughtful discussion. And and they they determined that was going to serve their needs best. And I think it served, while I was there at the city, served them very well. We went, as you know, and we went through the through two thousand eight to eighteen, we went through the Great Recession. And we found ourselves dipping into that first four percent, but not into the eight in order to sustain the development services that we had promised to provide support for for permits that were already in the in the hopper. Even though we found almost nobody pulling new permits and no new development service revenue coming in during that Great Recession, as an example. Continency planning, you know, how do you, how do you go about deciding who who gets to decide what, when, and things of that nature? When is the operating budget balanced? When I was at Everett, when I first got there, they would, they had essentially zero fund balance. The operating budget could use all the resources that were available at the disposal according to the council policy in order to meet the needs and meaning that they were running with zero fund balance. We since we changed that while I was here. But what what does balancing the budget really mean? How do you use one time resources? And I alluded to that a bit ago when I talked about the development work that was going on at the time, resulting in a lot of money that wasn't coming into the city that wasn't going to be sustained over time, once a lot of that development occurred. And then fluctuating revenues. When I was at the City of Linwood, we had, you know, quite a bit of fluctuation in our sales taxes. And and so they took that into account in terms of how they set on balances and the way they manage their financial affairs as a result of the council's discussion and adopting a financial policy. What are the right approaches to fees and charges? You know, at Redmond, for instance, the fees and charges were looked at by that council as very similar to our property tax. Whether the money comes to us through a water fee or a wastewater fee or a surface water fee or a property tax, it's the same people, the property owners that are paying the bills. And and they don't get a choice whether or not, you know, they're going to get sewer service from us or whether or not they're going to get surface water service from us. And so their their philosophy was very much a total total cost of service approach. And we provided them that information and that's how they, that's how they did rate setting and went on very, very much all encompassing of all the different ways that people pay bills there. You know, one that's a kind of an aside, but certainly important is, you know, when and how would we incur debt? Obviously, the council has authorized any incurrence of debt. But when would the council decide was the right time to go and do that, you know, for what kinds of uses? And how would you do it? You know, how would you access to that markets in terms of approaches for, you know, competitive or or with pre identified participants in the in the marketplace or things of that sort. So just a couple of examples of the kinds of financial policies that a council will want to get some consideration to. And again, your staff will will bring to you some ideas about that as well. Mine is a very generic, high level list and and so it's certainly not intended to be all encompassing. Shifting gears a little bit, we're going to talk a little bit about the nature of public finance, of governmental finance. So in the governmental financial world, we use what we call funds, F U N D S. And these funds are a self balancing set of accounts. So each fund will have its own balance sheet. If you look at Microsoft's annual financial report, you'll see one balance sheet for Microsoft, even though it's a, you know, international multi billion dollar company with many lines of business, they have one balance sheet. Whereas the city of SoCalomy has several balance sheets. It has one balance sheet for each of your funds. We'll talk about what a fund is here in just a minute. A budget will tend to need to be adopted for each fund. Not every fund needs a budget, but we'll talk about that in a minute. But but to the extent you want to authorize you know, expenditures from a fund, you'll need to adopt a budget for that particular fund. So you've got several funds that you'll be adopting a budget for. And funds are grouped into fund types. And we'll take a look at that here in just a second. These fund types and all this fund accounting is all developed in the construct of a combination of of authorities. One is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So if you've heard of the FASB in the private sector, Financial Accounting Standards Board, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is its sister organization, in fact, is under the same oversight umbrella. And the government accounting standards where G Gatsby sets these rules for those that do their accounting under GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles, Gatsby rules. The state auditor's office has the legislative authority to impose those rules on us as they see fit. And they have created two ways for us to approach this work. One way is to follow Gatsby and GAAP. The other way is to do essentially a cash basis approach, so much like you would manage your checkbook. In either case, you've got to use fund accounting of and in keeping the monies separate by fund is 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 paramount in either of the GAAP or cash worlds that the auditor's office has permitted us, local governments here in Washington, to use. So understanding that fund accounting and whatnot is important to be able to do our work well here. And and so let's take a quick look at that. This this illustrates the variety of funded types in funds that can occur. And we're going to drill in here to some of the ones that are more common. But this gives you an idea. You can see, we'll work from the right to the left. Fiduciary funds are just like it sounds. It's somebody else's money. We're holding that money on in trust on behalf of somebody else. And common examples are pension funds or agency funds. Somebody has entrusted us to look after their resources on their behalf. You might recall way back when, when Orange County went bankrupt, the big question was whether or not the pension funds that the county held were available to to the the debtor, the the people that they owed money to. And and the determination was, no, that's a fiduciary fund. The county was The county was only holding those resources on behalf of the pensioners. And those were not available to creditors of the, of the county. So fiduciary funds are those that are, we're holding on behalf of somebody else. There's not very many of these types of fun types in a typical city government. And these are, this is a good example of the kind of fund where maybe you don't, maybe you've got a fiduciary fund, but you don't really need to adopt a budget for it. Because you're not going about spending these resources for your community purpose. And so, so that's one type of fiduciary fund. The way these funds kind of get broken down is where does the money come? That's oftentimes a way to kind of triggers how we think about these fund accounting. The money, if the money is coming from somebody else and it's for somebody else, it's a fiduciary fund. If the money is coming from a customer, then it's a proprietary fund, right? If the, if the primary source of the resources is a customer, like for our water, our water system, it's water repayers that are paying the bills for the water system, right? So those are customers of the water system and the wastewater system, the surface water system. If we have a golf course, a golf course, the, these customers are paying the bills and that money is to be used solely for that purpose. So water rate money is to go into the water enterprise fund. So waters is a sub fund of the enterprise fund type. And water rate money is to be used solely for water fund purposes. And, and so when we have external customers, like a water customer or wastewater customer, then that's an enterprise fund. If our customers are internal to our organization, like maybe a rental shop or a print, in the old days of print shop, you don't see those often anymore. But data processing or other kinds of internal service operations, IT is, is a, is a classic example of an internal service fund. The rate payers are our internal customers. And there was a cost allocation methodology that your finance department will put together that says, you know, based on like what kind of computer equipment you have or based on the kind of rolling stock you have, why not your rates for to pay into the equipment rental fund are, you know, this. And then your rate payer internally, internal service fund, you can run a fund. Again, those resources that are held in that fund are used for that purpose.
I think there's a question.
Sure. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Cooper Johnson.
All right. Thank you. A quick question on the fiduciary funds. You'll have to apologize for my complete lack of expertise in this area. So I'm probably going to use the wrong terms for this question. And I'm also not necessarily suggesting that we should do this or it's a good idea. Just wanting to understand how, how all this works. Are those funds that are in the fiduciary column there? Are those required to be essentially on hand for the city? Or are those things that can be sort of held in debt? That the city will have those available at some point in, in the same sense you could have debt to pay off other things, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think so. And feel free to elaborate if I'm heading down the wrong path here. But it's, it is intended to represent resources in hand. So, so therefore, again, as people contribute to a pension system. And again, here in Washington, our pension systems are operated by the state. So it's not a good example. But, but if we contribute to a pension system, then those pension resources are held, they exist, right? There's not some future resource that's going to be identified either in the form of, of a liability like debt or some other way. But there are resources that are, that exist in our in hand, they, that we are holding on their behalf. So it tends to represent current tangible resources, right? Not something that's in, that's anticipated.
Okay. Yeah, I think that answers my question. So we can't say, oh, okay, I guess we need to go get that bond to fill in the pension or whatever. Right? Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, it gets, you know, it gets complicated in the sense that there are indeed pension bonds, which, you know, I don't intend to get into here. I don't recommend it. It's not really relevant to us because again, our pension system is with the state and they're relatively healthy. Thank goodness. But, um, but yeah, I mean, it, it's intended to represent resources in hand. So thank you for the question. The, you broke the ice, so I appreciate that. So internal service, those customers are internal to us. And there's a variety of examples of types of internal service funds, different cities organize themselves differently this way. And again, here's an example where you can think about how do we want to organize ourselves so that we can have things managed in a way that is consistent with our vision of how this should be done. Moving further to the left, we get now get into the general governmental column. And general governmental is largely resources that comes from the general public. It can be taxation is a very common one, obviously, sales tax, property tax, utility tax, business taxes, whatever. It can be resources from other governments. And, but typically it comes, it's a general governmental in its nature, right? It's not, it's not a fee for service like proprietary would be. So working our way from the bottom up, permanent funds, I'm not going to spend much time with that. Capital projects, this is where it gets unnecessarily and overly complicated. If a capital project is of a general governmental nature, like let's say a city hall or streets or parks, then it's a general government capital project and that, and it should be a capital project fund that we use to account for that. If the capital project is really related to an enterprise where internal service activity in that capital project should be accounted for in the proprietary column. Because otherwise we wouldn't have the right rate setting context for those services with, we were not including the capital component. Think of a utility, a wastewater utility, a wastewater plant. It's very, very expensive to build and maintain. If we didn't include that in the wastewater, we'll keeping within the sewer system utility, utility fund here. We'd be missing a significant component of what the rates are intended to help provide. And so any, any capital projects that relate to enterprise or internal service funds are accounted for in those funds in the enterprise or internal service fund. If it's not related directly to one of those kinds of funds, that capital project then called belongs over here under general government. And recently the Gatsby determined and the state auditors have imposed this for all of the local governments in Washington. The capital projects funds actually have to be contributed to a capital project. In the past, we would have like planning and things of that sort in capital project funds. But planning doesn't result in a project. It may, if it relates to a specific project, it could, but just general planning doesn't. So the capital project funds in general government are for those things that are result in improvements in capital infrastructure in our community. Again, good examples here are streets, parks, sidewalks, your, your civic buildings, city hall, things of that sort. Debt service, just like capital projects is a general governmental debt service fund. If the debt is applicable to a general governmental purpose. If the debt is applicable to a proprietary purpose, then that debt service is accounted for in that proprietary fund. Again, the idea being that you wouldn't be able to effectively do rate setting for proprietary activity. If you weren't counting the debt that was incurred to be able to provide that, you know, use the wastewater treatment plant example. They're very expensive. You almost always incurred debt to build them and that debt needs to be part of the sewer fund so that you can include the debt service that's required to pay back those bonds in your rate setting work. Other than that, if it's not related to a proprietary activity, then that service is a, another, another type of general governmental fund. Special revenue funds, and I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself here, but we'll skip through some slides here in a bit where I delve into this and I won't belabor the point. Special revenue funds are those funds where somebody else has given us general revenues to spend on a very specific purpose. We're giving us the authority to collect general revenues, but that authority is limited to a very specific purpose. And a classic example here is the hotel motel tax or sometimes called the transient lodging tax. There's a lot of state law that talks about the way this money can be spent. It's very specific. And so it can't just be thrown, these resources, the hotel motel tax, the transit lodging tax can't just be thrown into the general fund. It's got to be accounted for in a unique special revenue fund so that we can demonstrate that we use those resources consistent with the way they were directed to be used in state law. Some cities still have a city street gas tax type fund. There is state law that dictates that the gas taxes be used in a certain way. Oftentimes the gas tax is woefully inadequate to meet the needs of maintaining city streets. So many cities have just combined the gas tax resources into their general fund because it's, they spend way more than the gas tax on maintaining city streets. So you may have a city street fund or you may not have a city street fund. But nonetheless, the gas tax is dedicated to maintaining city streets. And you need to be able to demonstrate that you've spent at least that much money on maintaining those city streets. Impact fees is a good example where if you're collecting various kinds of impact fees, some account for those. And if they directly relate to a capital project and capital projects funds, some account for those in special revenue. Again, the Gatsby and the state auditors have both said that special revenue funds can only be used in those cases where you were mandated to use those resources in a limited way. If you've decided as a matter of council policy that you want to limit your use of certain resources in a specific way. And an example of that is in Bellevue where they use a portion of the B and O tax dedicated to capital projects. Well, they have to receive that B and O tax into the general fund because nobody else told them they had to do it that way. They decided to do it that way. So it's a general revenue. So it comes into the general funding and they parse it out to where they want to use it. So everything else that we haven't talked about is accounted for in the general fund. And quite literally, the definition of the general fund is anything that's not in mandated to be identified and spent in a, in a different, unique fund is to be accounted for in a general fund. Now, looking at the city of SoCalomy budget, this is your listing of funds. You have fund numbers across the low, the far left corner here or column, I should say. And next to that is the funded name. And here's a good example, you can see in the general fund, you've got a number of breakouts from the general fund. And that's great because from budget management purposes, you can, you can split out pieces of the general fund into specific elements as you choose. And again, this should be a council direction and there should be a clear track record where the council said, we want to account for certain elements of our activities in, in a sub fund of the general fund. So that, you know, those of us that are charged with looking after that can do it the way you intended it to occur. These other here, you know, you've got general fund. So you've got reserve funds here and you've got special revenue funds here. And it looks like capital project funds here and, and various enterprise funds and internal service funds. So you've got internal services down here, debt service funds here. So you've got a variety of different fund types that are in use at the city of SoCalomy right now. So again, I pulled this off your website and I've seen it before. Robert shared it with me when I've worked with him off, off and on over the years, your former finance director. And, and so this is one way to look at the city's fiscal affairs. If I may be so bold, this would be another way to look at the same information. Here I've aggregated some things that, you know, for your, you know, for your detailed work need to be disaggregated, right? I mean, this is a high level aggregation of all the various special revenue fund types into one column. Cause remember that special revenue fund type column represents all these funds here. So I've summarized it now, these are not your numbers. Don't misunderstand. I didn't recreate your numbers. I just pulled this from one of the budgets I've looked at. And in fact, you can see it's dated, it's a bit out of date. But this is a way to think about how do we demystify this for the others who are trying to follow what we're doing? You know, here's a good example in my mind, what I call a combining funds, a budget spreadsheet. These are the various sources of resources. You can see what comes from where, right? So the enterprise funds are largely made up of charges for services. Remember we talked about that. Some of the licenses and permits for utility work occur in here as well. But for the most part, your general revenues, your, your taxes and, you know, your fines of forfeitures, the franchise fees, things like that occur in the general fund. And this really helps you kind of get your head around what kinds of funds collect, what kinds of resources. And then again, you can organize expenditures either by type of service. For instance, general government, public safety, this is here, you can organize it by, again, the nature of the work, you can, you know, the, the, around the priorities. I'd see some budgets that organize their expenditures around the way they prioritize. They've identified their, their city priority structure. It can be the nature of the expense. It can be salaries and compensation, supplies and, 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 you know, things of that nature as well. So there's a variety of ways you can, you can depict your expenditures. But again, here you can see, these are what we collect for the general fund. This is what we spend, collect and spend, collect and spend. And the other thing I would add, I guess, two other thoughts to this as an example, just for your consideration to kind of, again, work at demystifying this a little bit. Remember this is what we look like now. This is what we could look like. But two other thoughts around this, one is around to the thousands. There's a lot of numbers on this page and I'm comfortable with numbers and I'm sure a lot of you are as well, but not everybody is. So around the thousands would help declutter it quite a bit. And, and then secondly, I'd put beginning fund balance at the top of this. And then I put ending fund balance at the bottom of it so that we know how much money we're coming into this budget period, this binding with, and how much money we expect to have at the end of the way. So that'd be a couple of things I do to edit, even make this presentation here a little bit, you know, better, I guess. For lack of a better articulate word. But, but again, this does depict very clearly those sources and uses of the, of those resources in this community here by fund type and, and it helps make it clearer. This is a good, this is a way we approached it at Redmond. Like, I guess I could have even used a ribbon example. So as I said, we're going to drill a little bit into these fun types a little further. I've worked to not repeat myself, so forgive me to the extent I do. I kind of hit the general fund at a pretty high level earlier. This is where you're going to spend the majority of your time. The general fund is where you're going to find the challenges are to get that budget balance. That's where lots of things are paid for or provided for. And yet there's a fair amount of structure around what resources you can collect that go into that general fund bucket. You know, property taxes are limited. You know, sales taxes are going to be what they are and things of that sort. So, so the general fund, even though it's sort of at the end of our discussion earlier, and it's kind of the catchall, you know, whatever's not required to be in, in other funds is where you're going to spend a fair amount of your time as you work through the budget. Some communities call this fund the current expense fund. You don't hear that quite as much anymore. That's mostly smaller communities, but you'll hear that term from time to time. And it's essentially the same thing as a general fund. As I said, special revenue funds are required to be used for legally restricted specific purposes on expenditures. Capital projects, remember, do not include capital projects funded in the proprietary trust funds. Those are included in those particular fund types themselves. And it must result in some kind of a acquisition or project. At the end of the day, that's a change that occurred a few years back with the accounting standards. As you incur a debt, long-term debt, short-term debt is, is paid for out of whatever fund incurred the debt. But long-term debt is of a general governmental type is, is accounted for in a debt service fund. Remember long-term debt that is proprietary type is a kind of right now proprietary. So what kinds of resources come into the general fund? Again, the kind of in Washington, the three pillars of our revenue structure are property tax and retail sales and use tax. And then everything else is kind of the third pillar. And everything else can be made up of a variety of things depending on the community. It varies quite substantially from one community to the next. In, in some cases, the utility taxes run 20, 25% in Eastern Washington. That's unheard of in Western Washington, but very high, whereas B and O taxes don't exist in Eastern Washington. To any extent, and, and are fairly common in Western Washington. Gambling taxes, depending on, you know, the nature of that activity that you permitted in your community can, can either be a significant source of revenue or, or maybe it doesn't exist. And, and because you've decided that gambling establishments are not something that you've, you know, created a permitting opportunity for. Charges for services in general government are things like parks as an example. Plan review, if you've got your development activity in your general fund, you can have a lot of plan review type activity in a you can have a lot of plan review type activity and the charges for services, licenses and permits. You know, business licenses, again, building permits. There are some communities that do the development activity in a dedicated fund. But most do it in general government funds. And so building permits and that kind of thing can occur revenue in the general governmental fund. Money from other governments, intergovernmental money. So this can be state shared revenues. You know, some of the monies that the state shares with us, local governments as well as grants, state and federal grants, county grants, things of that sort. Those are intergovernmental revenues. And then if we have facilities that we rent to others, rental fees and then if we make assessments of one sort or another, that can that can be a source of revenue as well. There's a variety of laws that dictate how some of these special revenues are to be utilized. Then I would recommend the municipal research and services center resources as a great way to kind of look at this. If you have any questions about, are there limitations on certain kinds of revenues? The real estate excise tax, it's a good example of that in Washington state, what we call REIT, real estate excise tax. REIT is the acronym. There's two halves to it, REIT one and REIT two. Weirdly enough, and we've tried to get this changed over the years, but it's always been this way. REIT one and REIT two have, you know, different rules as to how they can be used. And and so, and so again, those are examples of the kinds of things that we want to be able to account for in a special revenue fund. So we can clearly illustrate that we've used those monies for their intended purpose. The auditors, when they come and visit you, will double check and make sure that those monies have been used appropriately. And so that's something we work to do in the accounting world is to make sure we can demonstrate that clearly through our books that we've used these monies correctly. I mentioned hotel, motel money, criminal justice tax, some of the examples there. So again, proprietary funds, we talked about this a little bit. Remember that we're proprietary funds are where you want to understand what is it cost to provide the service? And how much do I have to charge to recover those costs and keep that fund whole? Keep it healthy, keep it solvent. And and these are kind, these operations are the kind of thing where you tend to have some pretty big expenses. As I've mentioned a couple of times, the wastewater treatment plant, water treatment facilities, whatever the case might be, you've got, you know, distribution pipes in the waterworks. And you've got collection pipes in the wastewater works. You got a growing infrastructure around surface water these days. And so those things are expensive. And so you tend to want to have a longer term perspective. How, you know, how can we be sure that over the course of time that this activity is going to be able to be sustained through the rates we're charging? And that we're not charging too much. Obviously, we don't want to charge too much. We're just supposed to recover costs and and maintain a a healthy financial activity here. So so rate setting is something that's very important, a very important responsibility to counsel. And rate setting starts with budgeting, right? We've got to look out ahead and say, you know, do we have debt? Are we going to need to incur any debt? Do we need to incur any large capital expenses? That are going to cause us to need to factor that into our rate setting. Oftentimes, we hire somebody to come that's an expert in the rate setting business. And we do a bit of a, you know, a search for those firms, RFP process or whatever, and we hire somebody to come in and help us build those models and analyze these costs over time. And again, it's important to think long-term in the proprietary accounts so that we can sustain that activity. You don't want to be that council where somebody was shortsighted and you get a notice from the state that says you've got to make these investments and all of a sudden I need to 50% rate rate increase. Because that that kind of foresight work wasn't done earlier. And does. And so again, that's something to keep in mind for the nature of this particular kind of work. Let me also say that you'll you'll have staff come to you with a cost allocation plan where general governmental costs are expended on behalf of the proprietary account. So for example, you don't want to have a unique accounting function for your proprietary activity and a unique accounting function for your general government activity. You want one accounting function that serves both purposes. And so you want to parse the cost of that one accounting function into its two different, you know, purposes and to who it's serving. So part of that accounting function or human resource function or city administration function, legal function, all those general government sort of organizational support costs will be allocated to your proprietary accounts. This is appropriate. You should have a methodology as to how you decided how much to allocate to those proprietary accounts. Because remember, it's rate payers paying these bills. And so there should be a methodology. And again, I recommend the council become familiar with this and adopt it. And that it's daylighted, it's 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 discussed and part of the budget discussion as to what those cost allocations were, how much of the of the accounting function, the various general government functions are going to be allocated to the proprietary accounts in order for to recognize the amount of effort that's expended on behalf of serving those, those, you know, those functions. So and cost allocation plan is doesn't have to be rocket science, doesn't have to be complicated, but it needs to be based on some sort of logic and logic that can be explained to you. And you can explain to your constituents that says, yes, we do allocate some accounting costs to the water fund. And that's because the water fund payroll is run by the general government people. And so we allocate, you know, a piece of that general government payroll costs out to the proprietary funds because those people get paid by, you know, by the city too. And so that's an example of something that you run across as well. Budget is a great opportunity to kind of check in on that cost allocation. And and make sure you're comfortable with the, again, the rationale is being used because it will help drive rates. And so at the end of the day, again, you want to keep those rates as affordable as possible. And there's a lot of things, you know, pressures that are driving those rates, want to drive the rates up. And so you'll want to make sure you're comfortable with all those that they're important in to include so that those rates can be contained to the extent possible. So the cost of allocating services, providing services to other funds is true of the internal service. Remember, those are the internal customers. So by nature, their costs are going to be allocated to other governmental departments. But it's also true of the general governmental services that are provided to the enterprise funds as well. So typical revenue types then for the proprietary funds are those user charges that I've made reference to a couple of times. So user charges come in a couple of different forms, right? You have the the rates that you charge through through billing system. And then you have various other kinds of things like connection fees, sales of various types. And you may need to, you may have some opportunity to have some rental fees. If you have like a golf course or something of that sort, you're going to have a lot of rental fees. So there can be different types of enterprise activities depending on the on what your city provides. And so you can have different types of revenues that relate to that as well. The revenues for internal service are almost universally charges to other governmental departments, right? To provide the services to those departments. So not a lot of outside revenues to an internal service fund. And again, I won't belabor the fiduciary funds. We talked about that just a little bit earlier on. Any questions about funds or fund types? Are we are we having fun yet? Sorry. All right. I've seen none. We'll keep going. So budgeting, we've talked a lot about budgeting already. And I mentioned it's at the end of the day, it's adopting an ordinance that appropriates the resources needed by staff to spend money to provide service. That's essentially what budgeting culminates in. However, it is a strategic opportunity for strategic long-term planning. So you probably have already seen some reporting about the internal and external. The external report is typically your annual financial report. Every local government is required to prepare an external financial report. It's an annual financial report regardless of whether you do biennial budgeting or not. You still do an annual financial report. This is done in conformance with guidance by the state auditor's office here in Washington state. Again, the auditor has provided two paths for us to go down. We can either go down the gap path or the cash path. Most smaller local governments have chosen the cash path, much, much easier to comply with. And not a lot of benefit from spending the extra resources go down the gap path. But you do an annual financial report, which is then audited by the auditor's office. And you can find your past audit reports on the auditor's office website. So if you ever curious and going in and seeing, you know, kind of what those reports look like, that's they go back several years now on the auditor's website. You can use just keyword, the name of your your city and can find your past audit reports there. Internal reporting, the I think I talked more about this a little bit later on. I'm not going to belabor the point. But it's important to have a conversation internally to make sure your needs are being met in terms of your internal financial reporting. So I think I come back and talk about some of the requirements around that here in a bit. So I'll come back to that. One of the key elements around council, the council oversight role is this notion of internal control. And what I've done in the past with the councils I've worked with when I was finance director was have a workshop around internal controls and just talk a little bit about it at high level. You know, again, it's not our job to try and make accounts out of everybody. But but at a high level and talk about what those controls are. In the internal internal control world, there is this phrase called the tone at the top. And what happens when the leadership of the organization is involved in the discussion is it really helps clarify that there is a tone at the top that the council and the mayor and the party heads all buy into and and endorse. I'm trying to think of a better word to say this, but this notion of internal controls. Sad to say, but every local government I've worked with, and I worked with several, there has been one form or another affront and and it happens, it happens too frequently. And it almost always happens because of lax internal controls. And and so that tone at the top, creating awareness around what are our controls? And how, what does it, what is the design of our, our, you know, control structure look like, right? How do we, how do we think about this? How does it work? How does it function? Is something that is, I think, a worthwhile conversation to have at some point. Again, you see policies on the bullet there. That's a part of it. Again, this opportunity for council to to clarify what is okay and what's not okay. Is it okay for city employees to take home stuff that's no longer of use to the city surplus? You know, well, if you don't have a policy on it, then the answer is we don't know. And so being really clear about what's okay and what's not okay and and setting that tone at the top really empowers the staff that have responsibility for this work to carry that message to others in the organization and be very clear about it. An element of that, in my mind, I've had several council members come to me over the years and say, as a council member, either on the audit committee or the finance committee, what is our responsibility with reviewing these vouchers? We approve the vouchers. You know, what does that mean? What is that accomplish? What should I be doing as a council member to have done this work well? And in my answer to them as well, first of all, feel free to look at the vouchers. And not only that, at Redmond, we put all our bills up on our website. And if you ever wanted to go see what Redmond was spending its money on, you can just go look at their website. So not just the council members, but anybody. And by the way, we had lots of people looking. So it was kind of interesting. So first of all, feel free to look at what we're spending the money on and ask any questions, you know, because sometimes we spend money on weird things. And it doesn't immediately make sense until somebody explains, you know, oh, maybe that's a park and rec program. Or maybe it's, you know, something that's happening in, in, you know, the police department. Well, sometimes it's been so many on things that seem out of the ordinary. And and so, and so I asked a question, feel free to ask the question. But for me, I always turn that into a discussion about the internal controls. Because again, I wanted my council finance, we're on a committee that sometimes it's known as one name or the other, to be comfortable that, you know, voucher review was an element of internal control. But by the way, you're the third group to officially look at those vouchers. We've already had a auditing officer in the city review the vouchers before they were ever approved to be paid. And then behind that, we had the accounting manager, somebody else kind of double check the batches and make sure that there was nothing out of the ordinary. And then after that, we prepared the checks and submitted the voucher review for their council review. And you're the third, you're the third set of eyes taking a look at this. So so help them understand kind of what that whole system looked like and how we designed it to, again, provide assurance to the extent we could that that the resources were being safeguarded and the monies were being properly spent. So that's some things around, you know, some of the roles that you might find yourself dealing with as new council members here at the city. Slide to go forward. There we go. Now, back to budget budget timing, a little bit about budget timing. So depending on the nature and of the activity and the size of the city and whatnot, I'll tell you that Redmond, let's see, what is this March? So Redmond has probably already got staff in the departments working on building their budget requests. Yeah, they were very, they tend to be, it started early. They probably had their budget retreat or conversation with their council in January. So they get started early. By example, my friend Tony Nelson that I worked with, MRSC, would remind me that smaller communities wouldn't start their budget conversations until August, you know. And and for them, it was much easier to pull the information together and they could do it in a much shorter window of time. But here's an example of one that you might consider, you know, just as a way to get your head around a little bit. So who does what, when? As I mentioned, some of the pieces earlier, you'll see them showing up here again. So at the front end, whenever that occurs for you, put your strategy, your approach together. You know, what public input are you going to do? Have you adopted your sense of direction? You know, what's important, goals, policies? Had some kind of a council orientation of one form or another? Have you identified the issues? What's changed in the environment? Is there something happening out there that we need to be responsive to? And of course, classic examples these days are COVID, the pandemic, the the concerns around equity and equal justice. Those are some of the environmental things that many communities were responding to in their budget work that were, you know, doing different. And so what's out there? What has happened in the environment that we want to be responsive to? So that's something you want to give some thought to as well around the notion of a pre-budget issue. Well, you want to give some thought to what your calendar, your budget calendar should look like. And I understand there's one being developed there at the city that you'll be looking at here relatively soon. But one of the first things I always encourage the councils I've worked with to do is to adopt a budget calendar. And the reason I do that is primarily to kind of get everybody on the same page around how are we going to do this work? The calendar is not just, you know, a calendar with dates and whatnot. The calendar reans you around what the work is going to be. It's got those pieces of work identified. And so somebody gets a sense that we're missing something, you know, is this going to happen or isn't going to happen? It's not in a calendar. You can ask that question at that point in time. How are we going to approach this work? What what will the work consist of? And then will win that will, when will that work occur? And and so, so adopt, take a look at that calendar. And again, I've encouraged the councils that I've worked with to adopt the calendar. Get your fingerprints on that calendar. Commit yourselves to this approach and this schedule with these elements. And and then that will help clarify to everybody that's involved, yourselves, your staff and your community about how you're going to approach this important work. And again, I characterize this work as one of the most important things you'll do because you're spending other people's money to accomplish things on their behalf. And being transparent about it and being as clear about how you're going to do that as possible is fundamentally important in my mind. So adopting that calendar helps send that message. Once you do that, then the staff will do what they call a call to budget. In other words, that'll be a message that comes from somebody in the organization, either mayor, administrators, finance director, somebody that says, here's how this work is going to occur this year. Here's how we're going to build the budget. Here's what the templates for the different work elements are going to be. We're going to use the system or we're not going to use the system. We're going to have Excel spreadsheet templates or whatever, whatever reports we're going to use. Here's what the council said is important. Here are the goals. Here are the things we want you to think about as you build your budget. And that can take a variety of forms, you know, it can be, tell us how you're responsive. You know, that you can literally in the budget, call the budget. You know, that you can literally in the budget, call the budget, say to your staff, in your budget work, you're going to be expected to be able to articulate in that work product how you're responding to the council's policies, you know, what strategies are you proposing? How does what you're proposing speak to it? So that call to budget really sets the tone for how this work's going to occur. The meantime, finance department will be doing some forecasting. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes. They'll talk about what form the materials will take. I mentioned that earlier, you know, what, how are we going to do this work? What form does it take? This day and age, there's really no good budget systems. There's a few, but they're for huge organizations, not for organizations like ours. And so oftentimes it's Excel and Word, or maybe we've built some sort of a, you know, database oriented approach or whatnot. We, so, so hopefully, you know, there's some good tools that will be used, but again, how will that take place? And then when are the due dates for this work, the busy work that the staff are going to be called upon to do, what are the due dates for that? How will that work culminate? So that the mayor can make a recommendation to the council. And we'll look more at dates here in a few minutes, but then that, in the meantime, the clerk's got a role that's identified in state law in terms of, you know, providing various elements of this work. At the end of the day, the mayor submits a budget to the council. The council will have discussions about the budget. Hold public hearings and, you know, set levy, you know, property tax levy rates, that utility rates and things of that sort and, and adopt a budget. Now you're doing a biennial budget, it have been. So the buying and budget cycle, of course, is for two years worth of budget authority. That's done different ways in different places. The best, my opinion is the best way to do that is to do a two-year block of time at Redmond. They never even, when I got, by the time I got to Redmond in 2008, the biennial budgeting approach was so mature that they never thought about the budget in other than a full 24 months worth of appropriation, a two-year budget. Some places break that into two, one-year budgets. And they actually parse out pieces of the budget over time and things of that sort. So whatever works for you is fine, but again, you're appropriating two years' worth of authority as a council at a time. And in so doing, the law requires, and it's a good idea, in some cases, the law actually has a couple of good ideas in it. And this is one where there's a mid-biennial review that's required. So at the end of the first year of the biennial, staff will come to you and, and present you information about how the biennial is looking. And my recommendation is that at this point in time, that is an opportunity to tune things up. By then you'll know more about what compensation rates might look like, or maybe you'll be able to fine tune some of your revenue forecasts, things of that nature. But it's not a time to redo the budget process. And when those communities that have gone down the binding budget path and had struggled with it, that's usually a result of creating this huge burden in the middle of the biennial. By virtue of the mid-biennial review. So use that biennial review to check in and make adjustments as necessary to keep you on the path to accomplish those things you wanted to go accomplish. Maybe there's, again, something, maybe a pandemic or something like that has happened. In the meantime, you'll need to make some significant adjustments to. But for that, it's just a tune-up. It's just an opportunity to clean things up and refocus, you know, for that last half of the biennial. With a little sharper, you know, focus than you would have had when you originally adopted it, you know, in the year previous. So, so that's just a little bit of thinking around the, the biennial budget cycle approach. So I mentioned a couple of times, a budget calendar. I like to start with what's required. And in fact, you may want to have a format that those required elements are maybe bolded out or I tell a sites or something. So that you can kind of parse between things we decided to do because we thought it made a lot of sense and things that we were required to do. Because the law requires it of us and an auditor will come along and ask us for evidence that we did do it that way. I like to include those. First of all, let me say that I typically have a couple of calendars. I have one high level one, it's a public facing calendar. Posted on the website again, if you go to Redmond's website, I'm sure you'll still find their budget calendar on their website. That's the public facing calendar. It's got those public opportunities for public input. Things of that nature in it. It's got the council dates on it and things of that nature. It doesn't have the internal workings of the budget. Where we built all the, you know, how we built all the budget pieces together. There's a lot of deadlines built into the busy work of building a budget, but that's not on the public facing calendar. The public facing calendar is the one that I recommend the council adopt. And then when you adopt it, you know, by resolution or whatever form, by motion, whatever you want to, you know, whatever form your attorney recommends. Either way, it works for me. A resolution is a statement of council policy, so that's fine, or you can just adopt it by motion. Because it's not, you know, it's, it's just so that everybody agrees that that's what you're going to go by. Then you can publicize it and make it a, you know, make it public facing and again, provide that transparency to others. It really, as I said earlier, really identifies, you know, what the work is going to consist of, who's going to do what? This coordination, you know, I tend to have a column of who's responsible for which piece. So that it's not, you know, lost on somebody that if a department head has got a responsibility, that's pretty clearly spelled out there. And then we can use that to compare, are we on track, off track? And make sure that, again, we're structuring our time so that by the time the due dates come for presenting the budget, we're ready to go. And I've mentioned a couple of times, councils should adopt a high-level calendar. Staff will prepare budget requests. And I mentioned earlier, staff are passionate about what they're doing. And you want to give them an opportunity to propose ways to get what they do done. And so, so you're going to want, in your call letter, you're going to want to provide ways for staff to be able to do this. And you're wanting, going to want to be able to provide ways for them to articulate, you know, kind of their recommendations for how to pursue those things that, that you said were important. So you'll want to tell them, what are your goals? What, again, what are the policies? What are the priorities? Call it what you will. And then with the council, they're called it areas of emphasis. They weren't, weren't really ready to commit to goals, but you wanted to emphasize something. So that's what they called it. It's an example, but that really helps provide that focus for the staff. If you don't do it, you can't expect staff to respond to something they don't know about. So as a council, if you get a budget in the fall, you know, you should be able to anticipate seeing something that responds to that, to your request, to your interests, because you've articulated them. If you don't articulate them, then it's unreasonable to expect anybody to respond to your interests. And, and so again, that's where that policy work is so important. Another aspect about that policy work upfront, and I've seen this happen in cities and it usually results in some big problems. If you don't do that policy work, then somebody else will, and that's oftentimes staff. And in my opinion, you don't want staff taking policy initiative when that should be the council's prerogative. And the staff in the council tend to get crossways and that's oftentimes when you have problems of that nature. So council lays out the policy initiatives, staff can respond to that, provides that focus and eliminates misunderstandings and confusion. The worst that you want to avoid, I'm trying to think, say that more articulately, but you, what you don't want to have at the end of the day is a budget that the council can't believe in. Can't, you know, make some tweaks or whatever minor modifications to the extent that's necessary for whatever reason. But at the end of the day, the budget should be ready for council to go check, check, check. These are the things we asked about. And, and be able to efficiently find their way through to adopting that budget and not being a laborious task. Having said that, let me also say that when you are working in a strong mayor, form of government, the mayor also has a policy platform. And so it's important to understand and respect that as well. So I don't want to overlook that as well. I mentioned the clerk's call letter a couple of times. That's actually called for in the RCWs. So, so that's some, and again, the clerk, the RCWs say clerk because they were probably written a hundred years ago. That oftentimes means in, in the context of a city like San Juanmi, finance director, but RCWs oftentimes will say clerk. And here you see I have that in quotes because the quirk is the clerk, the clerk is not often responsible for setting up a war on taxes in debt requirements. It's generally more of a finance function. So as I said, the department head and program managers are responsible for, you know, proposing what they think they need to do their work. And, and then that's part of the budget development work that occurs over the course of the summer. When we were having our workshops each August in Leavenworth with the Association of Cities, this is some time when I would advise the councils in the room there, just to kind of give some breathing room to these folks because they're busy working and building their budgets. In fact, if you drop in on a department head or a program manager during this period of time, typically in the summer, depending on again, what your calendar looks like. They'll complain to you about the fact that working hard on their budgets and rightly so. It's a laborious task and I'm sure they're, while it's not something at the top of their list, they'd rather be out doing what it is. You know, that is in their line of work. In order to have the resources to do that well, they've got to put a good budget proposal together. So they'll be, they'll be busy working on that. And I mentioned earlier that revenues forecasting are often the responsibility of the finance department. A good finance department will be very open-minded to collaborating with others. So a lot of times department heads will be a great source of information around the revenues that they relate to, right? Excuse me, permit fees or park and recreation fees, things of that nature. They, sometimes you call in engineers and consultants. When I was with the city of Renton, we had a consultant who helped us forecast the effect of the Boeing plant down there on our revenues. And they were very helpful in that respect. Trying to decipher the connection between what was happening at the Boeing plant and how that affected revenues at the city of Renton. I like to check in with elected officials. I mean, a lot of times you're out talking to people and you kind of have a sense of what's going on in community. How are people feeling? You know, are they, are they staffing up or are they building inventories because they see a good season coming? Are they trimming down? You know, what's, what's happening in your community? And, you know, one of the big secrets, I guess, to doing good revenue forecasting is really having a sense of the pulse of what's going on out there. And, and so whether it's your, you know, through elected officials or others, citizenry or whatever, you know, the chamber, whatever sources help you get a sense of kind of, you know, how people are feeling. This, you know, the, the, you know, the confidence index, if you will, of, of your local economy and it kind of helps people see that happening. One of the things that's happened recently, of course, is the, with the advent of pandemic and some changes at Supreme Court. Through the Wayfair decision, we now are able to collect sales taxes on items that are shipped into our community from out of our state. And so many communities are beginning to see sales tax, remote sales tax collections as well. So, you know, kind of having a sense of, you know, what effect did that have on your sales tax? And how would that affect your future forecasts as you go forward as well? So as I said before, there's, there's the three sort of key elements of city, city revenues, property and retail sales. And then, you know, utility fees for the enterprise funds are by and large, lion's share of the enterprise fund revenues. Are there one-time revenues? Again, in your community, each community is unique in this respect. A lot of construction is occurring now with respect to some of the infrastructure that's money that's being invested. State roads, state road construction is, is local sales taxable? So if there's state road construction occurring in your community, then that's subject to sales tax. All the sound transit work that's happening in other P27 communities and subject to sales tax. So, so those are the kinds of things to, again, be aware of. There are ways to adjust the property tax limits through a levy lid lift or various approaches there. You can do special levies, you can impose the council manic determination, utility taxes. So there's various other things to, to consider. If in fact newer adjustments to your revenue streams are something of interest. And again, another example of a, of something that's very important to talk about, early enough on for somebody to do something with, right? If, and if you get to the fall and you say, gee, I wish we had more resources, we want to go do these things. That's too late to start talking about, you know, what options do we have? The time to talk about revenue options is, is very early on as part of that strategic conversation around, you know, goals. And we want to make significant inroads on this issue or that issue, so we need new resources. So let's talk about what the options are. So that's a good thing to talk about early, early on in the process. If in fact, that's, that's on your radar screen at all. Mentioned restricted uses, you know, resources that have restricted uses. I won't belabor that point. Utility rates, I've mentioned that a couple of times. Again, a very important responsibility, just so let's you look at that sort of, you know, math quiz, if you will, at the bottom there. Make sure that you understand your rates structure, you know? If you're not there yet, if you haven't had the opportunity as new council members, get your head around kind of why, why are rates the way they are? It's an important conversation to have. First of all, you've got lots of constituents who are wondering the same thing. But secondly, it's an important responsibility. And, and as I said, you're in between that, we want to have the rates provide for our needs, that we want to have them as low as possible. So having worked for a mayor who said, my task here is not to raise rates, regardless of anything else, that's not a good place to be. There's a balance strike between the two. It's not, it's not binary. It's, it's both. So I mentioned a couple of times, know your, know your cities, what's going on, use good data. We, over the, over time, always went back and developed sort of, sort of this context of data, you know, around you know, sales tax data and the sets value data and all the things that really drove some of those revenues that are important to our financial picture. New household, household formation around, you know, utilities, understanding, you know, the growth that was going on in, in, in our community around, you know, the commercial growth or household formation growth or whatever. And being able to kind of correlate all these things together and have them make sense in the context of each other. So for instance, if you've got certain growth assumptions, building your rate model for your utilities, those same growth assumptions should be leveraged for your other, you know, for your growth in the success value, which is subject to your property tax as well, and your growth in, in household formation, which will inform some sales tax forecasts and that nature. So triangulating these things and kind of making them all make sense in the context of each other is, is an opportunity that will help, you know, improve your forecasting and again, help improve your organizational understanding. So not just the finance people, but finance people, the city leadership, the council, the department heads need to all have a sense of kind of, you know, how is it we decided that the pie is this big? We really would rather to have it be bigger. And it could be smaller, and if it's smaller, we'll have to, you know, be even more constrained. But how is it we decided that this is the right amount of resources for us to be able to go forecast and be able to put to use and, and work in providing the needs for our community on a going forward basis? That's, that's a, that's a conversation that needs to occur. And then so in my mind, the finance office takes the lead, but it's not a back office finance, works the numbers and spits out a forecast. And, and you know, that's the end of it, kind of a day. It's a conversation. And so the forecast should, should be something that's, that is, you know, discussed and broadly understood. Again, you see here, I'd say interactive work session. You know, I got to the point where I was, you know, working with models in, in, computer models in Excel, nothing fancy. But the models were characterized in the form of charts. And so with, when we looked at what-if scenarios, you know, those others in the room could see the effect of a, one, one what-if scenario versus another in the form of, you know, the effect it would have on a, on a chart, so that it was, you know, easily consumable information for everybody. Again, not everybody's as enamored of numbers as some of us are, but, but certainly we can, we can make this, you know, so that everybody can participate in the conversation and kind of understand the messages we're trying to develop here. So as I said, staff will prepare a proposed budget. They'll do that in the context of a call letter. So that call letter is important, what it says, they'll do it in the context of fiscal policies in place. So that's important. I'll give you a good example of a fiscal policy and the way that comes into, into play there. At Redmond, I already told you, we had, we had our fund balance policy was two-tiered, right? It had the eight percent and the four percent, as you recall. And well, first, so as we would do our revenue forecast, the first thing we would do for our resources in the next, in biennial, because again, we were buying your budgeting there, is we would say, okay, so if it's now eight and four, so 12% of anticipated recent resources, and we did it this way because we could forecast resources at this point in the game. You can't forecast expenditures. At this point in the game, you're still pulling all that together. At this point in the game, you're still pulling all that together. So forecasted the resources and then we would just take that 12% and set it aside. But you know, whatever the delta was from where we started, because we started with 12%, right? Remember? And so whatever it took to get to 12% of the forecasted revenues, we set that aside. And everything else was in play. And so everything else oftentimes included both one-time money and ongoing. So we would parse the resources into ongoing in one time and that was all available for us to. Allocate in a recommended budget. We would allocate it very clearly as what was one time and what was ongoing. Because council policy said we wanted, they wanted to be very clear that we didn't use one-time resources for anything that was going to be an ongoing commitment. So, and so in following in the council policy. We were deploying all the resources that were available beyond the fund balance. We were parsing it into its ongoing one-time kind of nature. So that the council could kind of use that information to help think their way through what they wanted to, you know, adopt to the budget. And, and, and that was the way those policies. Informed the development of the budget that we provided to the council at Redmond. Everybody knew that was the construct. And so we knew that when we were building it, it wasn't a mystery and we didn't have to wonder what that might be. And the council knew when they got that information from us, how it would look, that that's the form it would take. And that never was a discussion during budget workshops. That discussion happened during policy development. And so that's an example of where the policy conversation occurred first and informed the work. And then the work reflected it and it never came up again. What we did do at the end of each budget cycle was go back to the council and say, no. You've just, you know, congratulations, you just survived the budget process. Did occur to you during the course of that discussion? That you wanted to change any of the financial policies and fiscal policies? Because if so, now's the time to do it, not in the heat of the battle. But in between, after they served their purpose. Did we learn anything that would suggest, and we changed them, you know, a little bit, almost every time and every two years. And so it's because the, they saw opportunities to make them even clearer or whatever the case might be. So in fact, we added a second four percent. Early on, and as a result of that discussion to the eight, making it a total of 12. So that's an example of how those fiscal policies can really help set the stage and take a lot of the, the confusion. The unnecessary conversation that would otherwise have occurred in the fall. Out of the picture then, when you're trying to adopt a budget that's already tough enough to do as it is. So as I said earlier, at this point, the budget comes to the council in the, in the fall. The, it should look familiar to the council. It should reflect the council policy goals. There's various ways to do this. I was just looking at a budget from, I think St. Petersburg, Florida earlier today. And in there, they had the council goal, then they had response, you know, the responses to it. You know, in this apartment, this and this apartment, that, this apartment, this. Sometimes you'll see the council goal and you'll see a dollar's allocated to various activities related to that council goal. So the way that that can look and take a variety of forms. But it should be, again, having the benefit of that direction early on. Enables that to occur and buffer that, you know, that, that just makes for a much longer and more difficult conversation. In the fall, when everybody's at that point, trying to figure out what's important and how much money should we allocate to. The council, the council should get budget information that enables them to have a good discussion. And make good decisions. And I wish I had included one of the, the NACS LB's. Definition of a, of a, I forget what they call it, it's not the budget process, but, but. But in the, in the NACS LB work, they say that at the end of the day. The, the budget process is intended to provide a work product. That enables the council to make good choices. And, and that, those good choices come from good information. And, and before that good information, then the council's left with, you know, something less to work with. And that's unfortunate. And so, so creating that kind of a work product, so that at the end of the day, the council's got something in front of them. That represents, you know. Enough information that they can make good choices and can, and can turn out, and I think like those choices to the constituents. Is something to keep in mind. How is it what we're doing? Resulting in that kind of work. And so is, again, think about how you structure this work going forward with a lot of new people involved. You know, that's, I would recommend you keep that in mind. How is this gonna, how is the work we're doing today going to inform that conversation? We're all going to be proud of in the fall and decisions that we're all going to be proud of, understand and be able to articulate in the fall as well. So that's, when I talk to my peers. And I do a fair amount of training for Jif Way. And when I talk to my peers, I tell them that same thing all the time. Your work, your job is to enable the council to have a great conversation. Feel really good about the decisions they're making and be able to, you know, express that to their constituents. That's, that's important to me. I hope it's important. Okay, so the department heads are going to propose their budgets. If this is an opportunity oftentimes that they get to talk about their work. Any of them, that's important to them, they, they, they look forward to this opportunity. Quite honestly, it's, you know, it's, it's a. Place where they can. And trying to think of a better word than say brag, but you know, they can brag about some of the stuff that they do that goes unheralded. Oftentimes over the course of time in the community. And again, these meetings being televised these days and things of that sort. It's a good opportunity for them to surface some of the work that's going on that maybe people don't, don't appreciate all that goes into providing the kinds of things that we do. The budget, the way that budget is presented, I showed you a couple of examples. You know, being clear about sources and uses, where the money's coming from, where it's going to. You know, we have this notion in budgeting of major funds. So a major fund is typically something that represents 10% of a fund type. So obviously the good, the general fund is a major fund. But if you've got a bunch of, again, looking at the list of funds that exist in the Snoqualmie. If you've got a whole bunch of really small funds. To shine as much focus on them as you do the major funds is really kind of a disservice. I mean, they kind of tend to balance themselves, those small little special revenue funds. And, and so, you know, again, aggregate them, you know, break them out somewhere else in the support materials or whatever. Focus in on those major things where the decisions, the conversation needs to occur. And those decisions really need to occur. That tends to be the big utility funds, but we know it's the operating funds. Where are their staff? Where do we have staff allocated? So that's can be a street fund, can be the utility funds, can be the general fund. Focus in on those major, on the major elements and don't let the minor elements get in your, in your way. Don't forget the capital project budget. Tim, different places do their capital budgeting in different ways. Very commonly it's done at the same time. So your capital improvement budget or what the state now calls a capital facilities plan. Capital improvement. Projects and whatnot. They're a bit of a different nature because they tend to not always be nice and tidy within a certain window of time, a year or two years. But, but developing a capital projects budget along this with, at the same time. Is something that we tend to do as, as well.
Mr. Bailey, we have a question. And question.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with regard to the capital fund. That, when I'm a little bit confused on is that we have two types of capital improvement plans. We have the utility and the non-utility. And the utility would be one of these enterprise funds, I believe. Where we have a specific fee that's generally based on usage-ish. And that that goes toward, my understanding is that it goes toward operating. And that at least some proportion of those fees go toward some future capital project. Like we have to fix a pump station or something. But let's say that we need some huge thing for our sewage system or whatever. And we don't have the funds right now, so we have to get a bond. So. All right, so the debt then would be in the debt fund from that bond. The money from the bond would go into the enterprise fund. And correct me wherever I'm wrong on this. And then. Itself would, for that utility, would those funds for improving? The, the system, the, the capital improvement? Would that go in this capital fund? Or would those funds for the capital still be in that enterprise fund? Did you follow that?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, let, let, let me, let me reel it back just a little bit. Yeah. So, so any capital investment, capital projects or whatnot. Or debt associated with an enterprise activity is always accounted for in an enterprise activity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if your water, you know, play this out a bit. If your water system needed to incur, you know, sell bonds to come up with $50 million, let's say to invest in a, in a treatment plan. The utility would be selling those bonds. Okay, and the repayment promise that you would make to the bondholders would be from revenues in that utility. They'd be limited to revenues in their utility. And I don't want to get too far down this road, but, but I think it serves to illustrate your point. So the revenues from that utility are the only resource that those bondholders have access to. They don't have access to your general taxes. Because it was that utility that sold that bond for that purpose of that wastewater treatment facility improvement. And so that bond belongs to the utility, the debt services in that utility. The money from the bond sale, the proceeds go into that utility's cash account. And then the money to spend for the capital improvement and that capital project is also accounted for in that utility as well. So it's all contained in the utility. Because it was the utility that incurred the bond to build the project to serve the ratepayers. So whenever it's a utility, an enterprise of any sort. Then all that related activity is contained in that enterprise activity, that enterprise utility fund. Okay, the only time you get into a debt service fund. Is when it's not a utility or not an enterprise activity. Like for instance, you, you know, in, in Redmond, we improved Bear Creek Parkway. So you could get around the backside of Redmond Way, right? And we sold bonds to do that and that was a general government bond. There's no utility related to Bear Creek Parkway. It was a road. And so those bonds were sold by the general government, general fund. And those ratepayers therefore had access, had rights to general resource, general revenues of the city. Because it was a general revenue bond. Whereas we also sold bonds that were related to this surface water utility and those ratepayers. Those bondholders only had access to the rates of the surface water utility. Because that was limited to the surface water utility activity. So when you get into debt. Issues, you know, issues related to incurring debt. It, it gets, you know, these fund accounting things become even more complicated. But the question you ask is, is right on, is, is, you know, what belongs where? And, and how do I, you know, how do I track this to make sure it's in the right place and that who's paying what bills, right? Okay, it's not property taxes, it's paying the bondholders or that water bond, it's those water ratepayers.
Okay, so the enterprise, which for us is essentially utilities, is my understanding, is essentially a closed system.
Right.
Everything related to that is that.
Good way to think about it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, good way to think about it, yep.
Councilor Mayhew has a question.
Yeah, really just a comment. Just keep in mind, council members, the utility fund in Snoqualmie. The significant majority of the spending every year is not the cost of operations of the utility. It's the capital spending. So, you know, when, when Mike's giving the examples of, you know, a $15 million treatment plant. Yep, that's what happens. So, you know, it, it's, when you take the total of the. Rates that we charge every year for the utilities. And then you look at, okay, well, what's that getting spent on? The big lion's share every year is additional capital expenditures. And so that's sort of an important thing to keep in mind. When you get to the topic of, oh, and so how will we set the rates? And you, you know, how do we go about doing that? Understanding where that money is getting spent is kind of helpful to, to keep in mind. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah, that's, and that's very typical, those utilities are capital intensive, right? I mean, they have the capital plans. And that's why, as I said earlier, it's so important to think longer term about that. You don't want to get, I was at Winnetou, when they raised the rates 40, 45% because they needed to address wastewater human plant problem. And, and you don't want to have your ratepayers asking you why you're raising rates 45%. It's not, it's not politically healthy. It's not good financial management either, so. But are there any other questions, Mayor, or are we good to go?
Next slide, Councilor Johnson has one more question.
Sure. Yeah, one more thing, I was still just a little bit confused on the difference between internal things and say a general fund. When I look at the examples, you said like a print shop or data processing. I mean, those sound like. You know, from my uneducated perspective here, that sounds almost like administrative costs. I'm wondering how is that different from, I don't know, they, they need more paper clips at City Hall? Or, or is it not? I mean, are administrative things that internal spending or is some of it general? I just was unclear on what the internal funds are or internal services are.
Yeah, so better examples of internal services are the fleet, the equipment rental. So that's a very common one in, in all cities. You don't see print shops much anymore. We had a print shop was an internal service fund in Renton. That now goes back, you know, 15 years ago. But, but you don't see that much anymore because it is incidental, right? It's almost insignificant these days. But a fleet is not, and so how do you maintain a, a active fleet? That one provides the day-to-day maintenance and upkeep of the fleet. But secondly, replaces the fleet in a timely basis. And, and the way you do that is by treating the fleet function almost like a utility. Within the city, but your customers in this case are your own departments. And so, so a fleet is a much better example. We had an IT function, our IT function at Redmond was an internal service fund. But again, the same idea, the day-to-day upkeep and, and care and feeding of all the IT equipment and then the replacement over time. It's, that's become, you know, more expensive and in a much bigger footprint than, than it had been in the past. So those are examples of internal service accounts, funds. And, and there are others, just different cities will choose to do different things that way. Sometimes the administrative, the administration can be in an internal service fund. So you can have finance and HR and legal as a internal service activity. And then charge those costs out to the various other funds based on some parameter. Like an HR charge might be based on number of employees. And finance charge might be based on number of transactions in the system or something like that, so.
Okay, what it's sounding like then is that the, what counts as being an internal fund is not something that is. Defined by the state, but it's something that's defined by the city. To say, we're going to say that this part of our budget is an internal thing and we're going to count it as this thing. And we're going to separate it from the general fund, is that correct?
Yeah, there's more discretion certainly there. I think there's, there's some things that the discretion is kind of taken away from you, like again, the fleet. If I'm not mistaken, and it's been a while since I looked. I think the fleet is required by the accounting rules to be accounted for as an internal service. But beyond that, there's, there's quite a bit more discretion on your part.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and again, it's a lot about how you want to manage, manage the affairs, right? Do you want to have, you want your IT footprint to be sustainable? In the old days, if somebody's computer was wearing out, they would put in a request to get a computer. Maybe they got one, maybe they didn't, there was no funds readily identified to replace a computer with. But now if your computers are set up on a revolving account, so that you put money aside. And after five years, that PC is going to automatically be replaced. Now you've begun to move your, move your management of that activity more towards an internal service type activity. Where you've got predictable sources of upkeep for that, for that function. So some do copiers that way, because copiers were an example, again, some years ago where. You know, you'd hang on to the copier because there was no money to replace it. And yet at some point, that just doesn't make any sense anymore. So, yep. Good questions. In building your budget, back to the slide here, presuming there's no more questions and I'm. Glad to answer questions, but in the middle, you know, start with the base. glad to answer questions, but um in the middle, you know, start with the basics, right? You know certain things. You've got a certain personnel footprint, and those people are going to earn certain wages. You're going to have certain benefits. Uh, you're going to contribute a certain amount to the retirement system. You know, you've got, if you've got outstanding debt, you know what those payments are going to be. Uh, you've got some costs you can kind of start with as building blocks to begin to build your budget from and say, we know these costs are in. And beyond that, you've got a lot more discretion. Um, you know, you'll have, over the years, I'm trying to think of how to say this so it comes across correctly. I run into people who would say, we have all these fixed costs. And and they're they're really not all that fixed. The the costs can be fairly discretionary if the council's willing to make changes. But if you just keep kind of keep funding the same things over and over, then they do become, you know, kind of perceived to be kind of built-in costs. Um, but uh, but the costs, uh, you know, beyond, there's some absolutes like that service and things of that sort. But beyond that, there's there's a lot of discretion that um is exercised every budget. Um, but typically, what we do is we tend to roll the budget forward and we tend to adjust around the margins. Um, and so so those are uh so some things to think about. Uh, again, this chart on the right is just to sort of illustrate ways you can talk about this, these concepts. This is a, you know, for instance, an example of a pie chart that just represents the different kinds of funds. So general uh fund is this larger blue shade over here, and then the orange, it it represents the enterprise fund. This is, I'm guessing, this is probably from Redmond because that's about the the proportions we would have had there. But um, and again, a fair amount of internal service because we have a a large equipment rental and a large um data processing IT uh function as well. But um, but again, ways you can illustrate some of these things to help kind of get away from pages of numbers. Um, as I said earlier, there's a fair amount of structure of this around this work in this uh RCWs. And so the RCWs uh call for um, you know, the the uh preliminary budget to be presented. You know, that will identify um available funds to to be um you know, put to use in your budgeting process. So so um, you know, forecasting is a part of that. Now, beginning and ending fund balances, again, you want to think about how you want to build that into your process. Um, you know, it it relates to your financial policies, things of that nature. Um, and um, so uh, if you appropriate all the revenue sources and all the fund balances, then you've essentially authorized all that to be spent. So one thing I always advise councils is, as you think about what your budget looks like, what form it takes, keep in mind whatever you appropriate is being authorized to be spent. So if you appropriate your fund balances, and many cities do, you're authorizing that to be spent. Um, and um, in in so, it's just something to be aware of and to think about if that's the approach you want to take. Um, and then we've talked about fin- financial policies already. So the MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center, is something that i- if you're new to cities, uh maybe it's new to you, but certainly something I would recommend you take a look at. They have lots of information about not just financial topics, but that governance topics, polit- uh planning, policy, um procurement, uh a wide variety of topics. So MRSC produces every year a budget suggestions guide, um and they identify uh changes that you can anticipate in things like state shared revenues and things of that nature. They talk about any changes in state law. I'm sure there's a, I haven't looked at the uh most recent one. Uh, I haven't seen it in draft form yet, but I'm sure there's going to be discussions in there about some of the new federal resources that have become available as a result of the pandemic. Um, they also produce a revenue guide. And so one of the questions I've gotten over the years from council members is, how do we know we're taking advantage of all the resources that are available to us? And um, and so if that's a question that ever occurs to you, or if you want to see if monies need to be used a certain way or whatever, the revenue guide at MRSC um is a is a way to look into that. They also um will provide information about whatever the cost of living index uh indexes are, whether it be the Consumer Price Index or the um implicit price deflator, the various indexes that exist uh are all available on the MRSC website as well. The Association of Washington Cities uh does a tax and user fee survey, at least they have done in the past. I'm sure, again, how current that is. It's been a while since I've looked at that. I know they're very active in maintaining the salary and benefit work as well. So you can kind of keep track and make sure your 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 wages are keeping with the, you know, the the market that as you would prefer. Uh, and so those are some services through available through the AWC. Uh OFM at the State Office of Financial Management does uh the updates, the population estimates and and provides um other information to the um to the cities that say work to prepare budgets. And then uh, one thing that I think is worth mentioning too, at the State Auditor's Office, I've made a couple of references to them already. Um, they have the authority and prescribe how we do the the accounting work and reporting. But they also have a tool there on their system. They have a couple of tools now, uh actually, they've added a a couple uh new ones a- as well that help you uh analyze your own financial metrics uh for your community. But um, but one that um that I have found very helpful is the Local Government Financial Reporting System or LGFRS. The um, this allows you to look at revenues and or costs by different types of funds or certain funds combined, however you want to mix and match it. And also compare and contrast it to other communities. And you can do it on a by-county basis, or you can pick certain communities. You can um, uh, you know, look at uh some, you know, cost comparisons. And again, if ever you're wondering if maybe there's, you know, how is it they're able to do that in that community when we seem to struggle to find a resource to do that or whatever? This is a good opportunity for you to go in and see kind of how somebody else might be spending some of their resources. Um, i- if that's ever of interest you, you can use, uh do some uh analysis uh of that nature there. So uh, and handy tool goes back many, many years now, well over ten. Um, and so so there are a lot of a lot of history of information there. Uh, back to budgeting uh schedules. Um, so as I said, the RCW refers to the clerk uh oftentimes. Um, and in this case, department managers are supposed to have filed their estimates with the clerk um on by the Fourth Monday of September. Many of these dates, again, are absolute dates in the in the statutes, but your calendar will will uh be based on these, but probably have some different dates. For instance, you probably want to hear from your department heads before the end of September. If in fact, uh you're to provide a um, you know, an estimate to the mayor manager by the first day of October. And then by the end of October, you're have provided a budget to the council. So you'll want to create your own calendar that that is consistent with these dates, but probably is is different, right? It's going to create different kinds of of uh windows of time for you to get your work done that um not only abides by the state law, but also, you know, serves your purpose well in in the context of your process out there. Um, the preliminary budget information that's to be provided by the Chief Administrative Officer to the council is uh, again, calls in the statutes, it calls for three years worth of analysis of comparisons. But the most recent actual year, the current estimates and then the next projections or what's being proposed from a budget standpoint. So so actually, there's some prescription in state law around what form that takes. I mentioned earlier that uh balancing the general fund tends to be one of the more difficult things. Uh, let me take a a just a second though before I talk about that. And let me talk again about proprietary funds because one of the things that I've come to believe, and again, uh, different people can have different opinions, but but my sense in the proprietary funds, the uh the um enterprise funds where you've primarily paid, provided for by rates is that a lot of the budget work in those enterprise funds actually is done in the context of rate setting. If, as was mentioned earlier, uh exactly right, if you've already got a large footprint of either a debt commitment or a capital uh commitment to um maintain or upgrade a a plant, then that's that's, you know, that's a starting point for that budget discussion, right? You've already know that that's important to sustain that activity and that operation. As you've looked at those cost elements and set rates, those same cost elements should be those that go into the budget as well, right? Why would rate setting and all of the cost analysis that goes into rate setting be any different than the cost analysis that goes into budget? And so so when you look at proprietary funds and enterprise funds especially, um, start with your rates then. Start with, what did we say we wanted to uh have as a level of service when we set rates? And why would the budget we adopt be any different than that? And maybe the answer is, there's a couple of reasons why it would be different. But then you're dealing with those reasons, those exceptions, instead of rebuilding the budget uh as if you didn't already do that in some form in your rate setting work. So that's a bit about enterprise fund. Back to the general fund. In the meantime, in the general fund, you've got a lot of general government departments kind of competing in some sense with each other for a limited uh pool of resources. And um, competing is a bad word, I think I'll change that in the future because I don't really like the context of that. Um, and remember, we're building our best budget. Remember, we said that in the first slide? So how do we build the best budget for our community uh and find all the right trade-offs amongst all these general government departments? So that, at the end of the day, we've got everybody singing off the same song sheet, understanding what went into budget development and buying into the end product so that we as a team are now serving the city um with this uh, you know, combination of services uh and and doing it in a unified sort of approach. So um, so there's some team building, there's some work here to be done to help get everybody kind of on the same page, aware of how we're thinking our way through these trade-offs in order to build that best budget. And at some day, in some elements, we're going to emphasize one thing and we're going to have to de-emphasize something else. And as I said earlier, the hard part about this is you end up at the end of the day kind of stratifying these things a bit in order to make decisions. If you can't stratify, if you can't kind of create some structure around what's first and what's second, what's third, what's last, then um, then you can't make decisions. And um, and so that's when you tend to get hung up. You can't do everything for everybody. So so that's the hard part. So as I said earlier, where I've found that to be most effective is one is a good structure. And I alluded to that earlier, build your budget process so that it lends itself to being able to make decisions when the decision-making time comes. And then secondly, uh doing some team building. So everybody understands the um, what we call the procedural justice, right? We all had our chance to say why we thought things should be the way they should be. And at the end of the day, somebody's got to make a decision, but we had our chance. We had our, we we understand the process, we understand the decision-making construct. We had our opportunity to make our case. And at the end of the day, decisions get made. Now we need to get behind those decisions and help provide the service the best way we can to our community. So that's where a lot of organizational energy is going to get invested in helping to bring the right balance of all these competing interests into into balancing that general fund budget. Other funds tend to compete a bit with this as well because, as I mentioned before, street, street fund and the street needs, uh transportation needs tend to not be net by transportation dedicated resources. So they're competing with general government departments for general government resources as well. Uh, if we've incurred prior debt, obviously, that comes off the top, we've got to meet that debt commitment. And then um, at the same time, oftentimes, there's needs for capital investment that come from general resources as well. So uh, it's not just operations, it's uh also making investments out of general resources into uh capital needs, whether it be, again, parks or facilities or transportation needs or whatever those capital need uh might be. So this is where we're going to spend a lot of time and energy. So give some thought to how that's going to work so that it's effective and efficient. And you feel proud of it at the end of the day. Again, that's kind of my my way of thinking about it. How is it we set this up so that we're proud of the process, we're proud of the result, and we can carry that banner together and um in in explain it to our constituents? What you don't want to do is some of these creative budgeting practices, right? Uh, at the end of the day, um, you don't want to say, well, we'll make this work by by borrowing money from a utility fund into the general government fund. Or we'll make this work by using one-time money for ongoing, we'll hire these people with one-time money, but next budget cycle, we'll replace it with ongoing money. Well, it won't be any easier next budget cycle than it is this time. Um, we'll scale back on a cost allocation, we'll defer equipment uh replacements for a year or two years and create more breathing room in the general government. You know, if an analysis suggests that you can withstand a couple of years of uh of a vehicle replacement, then great. But if if um that vehicle replacement is on a schedule that meets those needs, then skinning that back so you create more space in general government is just a short-term, um, you know, budget gimmick that's going to end up costing you in the long run. Um, so those are some things to be careful of. Um, and there's some resources out there that if you're interested, I can point you in and talk about some of those s- s- more examples of of that nature. Uh, cross-the-board cuts, a lot of times you'll hear uh about c- across-the-board cuts because it's fair to everybody. Well, I would re-characterize that a little bit as across-the-board cuts are fair to nobody. You know, I mean, that's again, just sort of um uh avoiding the work, the hard work of stratifying uh those things that are most important in in making the the hard choices. So so again, be be careful of that. Um, it's uh, it's easy to uh defer divert to if uh if the discussion gets difficult. But again, that's usually a result of lacking some of these earlier pieces that uh I've uh belabored in order to try and help you avoid having those difficult discussions uh later on. Remember, at the end of the day, you want to be building your best budget so that you can, everybody can be proud of of that work. So as I've said, management prepares this preliminary budget. And as part, the but the RCW actually calls for a budget message to be presented along with the budget. And um, and that's to be presented sixty days prior to the end of the uh fiscal year. So roughly around November first. And um, and so uh, that needs to be filed with the clerk's office and also made available to the council and public as well by that by that date, um, so that in order to comply with that requirement. And again, doing it early uh is is in good uh everybody's best interest. I like to advocate for a budget document. And again, document, this day and age, you see it, actually, a lot of budget work is interactive and on online. There's some good tools out there that are pretty uh accessible that uh that, you know, kind of take away from the notion of a document because a document kind of sounds bureaucratic. But uh, and I don't mean to be bureaucratic, but I mean, this is the kind of information you want to include. You want a table of contents because not only does it tell you how to get to what you're looking for, it also tells you what's here. It informs the user of this work what they can expect to find, right? How it's organized, the, you know, and again, having looked at budgets as much as I have over the years, I can look at a table of contents and pretty quickly know what's missing or we're kind of, you know, what what was their mindset when they built this? Uh, most budgets are either built around the fund structure, which, by the way, your constituents could care less about, or your organizational structure. Typically, your constituents are less uh, a little more interested in that, but still not much. Um, it's and and so um, that's typically the construct rather than around, you know, what you're attempting to achieve, like priorities or whatever. If you look at Redmond's budget, you see we built ours around our our priorities. But um, but that's typically, so I'll look at a table of contents and right away be able to see what approach they use in building their budget work. As I said, a budget message is required under RCW. But it's a great uh tool to orient the um reader to what they can expect, you know? What is a yet that we're presenting? Why is this the right thing to do? Well, you know, why, why are we presenting this in in this way? What what is it we hope it accomplishes? This is where you'll talk about your goals. This is where you'll talk about how you intend your strategies around those goals, how you intend to make progress on those goals. Uh, you can talk about what's happening in the environment. Right now, I'm reading a lot of budget messages, as you might imagine, and talk about the pandemic and COVID uh and federal funds uh that are being uh made available to these organizations to help deal with the pandemic. And so that's, those are the kinds of things you tend to find in a budget message. Um, fund balances, sources and uses of the money, you know? So uh, how much money and fund balance you expect to come into the budget? What monies are coming from this budget cycle, this two-year window? Uh, how are you deploying this money? And I showed you that sort of simple chart that talks about by fund type and whatnot. Uh, what debt exists? Uh, do you anticipate incurring any more debt? Um, what's the nature of the debt to our conversation earlier? Is it proprietary debt or is it general government debt? Uh, what are our debt fund or what are our debt payment commitments? Who are the people that we're employing and how have we deployed them? How are they organized? What's our organizational structure looks like? How do we deploy our resources, our people resources? How many do we have? Um, you know, could you answer the question today? How many people are currently in your budget uh today? And how does that compare to last year? You know, did you increase numbers of people or, you know, was it? You know, did you increase numbers of people or, you know, was it the same? Uh, the, where did you increase and why was that an increase? Where did you um, make a reduction? And why, why did you make that reduction? So what happened in the three quarters of your budget is represented by people. Um, unless again, there's a large investment in, in um, infrastructure. And um, and so, you know, that's an important element to include. The departments should have um, an opportunity to talk about what they do, who they do it for, and what they hope to accomplish. You know, not how they do it necessarily, and that's one of the, my pet peeves. You, we don't need to make all the readers of the budget familiar with how we um, deploy, you know, that how, how we um, you know, manage. Our fire department responsibilities or our parks and public works responsibilities, what, you know, how we do what we do. But what is, why do we exist and who do we exist for? And what do we hope to accomplish and how are we doing on that? Um, you know, what are some indicators of our success? Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, capital improvements, what capital projects are in the works? When might you expect them to occur? Where will they occur in, in the community, things of that nature? So some, some things to look for in budget information that would come your way. That again, would help inform a, a thoughtful conversation around, is this, are these the right things? Is this what we expect? Is this the way we want to spend the community's money? The budget message, again, here's some examples of the kinds of things you might include in a budget message. Um, and I've, have hidden a couple of these already. You might talk about change, any changes in the financial policies. That helped inform the way you're doing this work. So that's an opportunity to hit the highlights of your financial policies here as well. I just looked at a budget the other day, I forget where it was from. But the budget message ran fifty-three pages. That's too long. Um, four to five pages is what I say here, hit the highlights. If anybody's going to read anything in your budget information, it's going to be your budget message. So tell them what you want them to know at the end of four or five pages about your, about your plan, your budget plan. Um, it, other things you might consider, including, you know, your mission statement, the summary of your funds. Um, and uh, kind of what the purpose of some, a short synopsis of especially your major funds are for. Uh, any general or economic context. You know, again, I'm reading a lot about uh, robust growth um, around the country. There seems to be a lot of economic growth around, especially residential. Uh, again, revenue highlights, what are your major revenue sources? Um, and what do you see happening with those? Uh, as I said earlier, how, how are the um, departments or the programs doing? How do you know they're on track? What are your performance metrics? Uh, so those are some things I mentioned, department narratives. How many staff are in each uh, department? Uh, you know, how, how is the department deploy their staff resources? Uh, so in police, you know, how many on patrol versus investigations versus records versus, you know, all the various elements. Things of that sort, so that uh, that really tells the story about uh, how those resources are being put to work. Uh, in order to help provide for a safe community as an example. Uh, some departments really like this opportunity to talk about accomplishments. And again, I've seen budgets where uh, I wouldn't recommend going on and on about accomplishments. Uh, people can get carried away with that. But um, but uh, you know, a third of a page of some of the highlights of things that happened over the last couple of years that a department's proud of. Uh, is a great opportunity to share that uh, message with both the council and also your community. Um, and then, and then goals for the department. In the context, in my mind, I uh, graduate level work is when those goals in the department are nested in the context of the council's goals, right? The how does the department organize its objectives, the things it's going to pursue that are going to leverage and pursue those things that the council said were important. Uh, employee classification, the salary schedule. Now, in Washington state, you're required to adopt a salary schedule and any do that in their budgets. They'll just include the salary schedule in the back of the budget. And boom, you're done with that requirement and um, and the benefit packages. And so uh, again, your finance staff can help coach you on that a little bit, but you're required to have authorized employees. Uh, to receive compensation in, in its various forms. And so uh, one of the questions we got at MRC all the time is, can we do this for employees? Well, yeah, as long as you said, that's part of their compensation package, you could do that, you know, you can. Um, yeah, have an employee appreciation day or whatever the case might be. But uh, but you've got to state law requires that you identify what that compensation package looks like. Again, many just put it in the back of their budget. So uh, again, back to the reporting pyramid. So the publics uh, and council will be one high level information, right? You want a page or two uh, from each department. In my mind, you want a half a page for each of the major revenues. Here's an example of sales tax in the top half of this page and the bottom half is property tax. Uh, just as an example. And then, um, and then there's going to be other information that's generated that can, that supports all this, right? The management is going to have uh, a further breakdown of all the, the details of their requests and kind of what the various accounts contribute to. Which part of the request and whatnot, so they can keep track of, you know, what they asked for, whether they got approved or not approved. And then, and then again, later on, go back and, and put together a plan to spend the money and, and do the thing that the money is related to. And so uh, and so even down in the details, you get into, like I said before, purchase orders, work orders, things of that sort. Um, so that uh, reporting pyramid applies in this budget information here is, as well. There's a couple of terms, I'll just leave this with you because I'm not going to go through them. And for the sake of time, we've talked about a couple of these things already. Uh, but again, some of the things you may run into, let me re, let me um, belabor one. And, and that's the difference between interfund loans and interfund transfers. And you know, again, a bit nuanced, but. A loan, uh, uh, any fund should not borrow in any form except with council authority. So um, a, a, the city I uh, I'm familiar with. They're golf, and again, you don't presumably have a golf course, their golf course got into financial trouble, so they just started taking loans from the utility fund. Well, the council didn't even know about it, let alone authorize it. Okay, well, that's inconsistent with state law. No one fund can benefit from the appropriation of another fund without the authority of the council. And if that fund is, if those monies are not to be used for that fund, then it's a loan. In other words, you can't use utility money on a golf course, right? It's utility monies and limited to being used for a utility purpose. The golf course money is limited to be used for the golf course purpose. So when the utility got money, uh, when the golf course got money from the utility, that had to take the form of a loan. And when the auditors showed up and said, you're moving money out of the utility to the golf course. And they said, yes, we are, because the golf course needed money. Well, they said, okay, well, one, you can't do that without council authority. Okay, council's got to approve any loans, whether it's internal or external, like bonds. And uh, and secondly, you can't just move money from one fund to another, it's got to take the form of a loan. So now you've got to repay the money and interest, whatever the going rate of interest was. So the internal interfund loan is to, is a loan between funds. And with a requirement to repay, and it's got to be authorized, pre-authorized by council. Now, from a cash flow standpoint, sometimes one fund will just run cash flow deficit for a while. And so we would have a financial policy where the council authorized by virtue of this financial policy. Temporary cash flow deficits to be offset by the finance department. With the loans that were repaid with interest and we provided notice to the council whenever that happened. But again, council was involved. Whereas an interfund transfer is a, where um, resources from one fund can be transferred to another fund. When it's an appropriate purpose or use of those resources to be transferred. So for instance, a transfer from the general fund to the street fund, for instance, is a good example of an interfund transfer. And then that's authorized by virtue of the transfer is part of the budget that got, got adopted. So a transfer is where the monies can be used uh, by that other fund. Uh, it's appropriate and legal use of those resources. And um, and it's already uh, consistent with the budget that the council adopted, so it doesn't require subsequent. Council approval. So there's a difference between interfund loans and interfund transfers, and I always want to kind of make sure that's clear. And the revenue bonds, uh, council member are an example of where the bonds were borrowed from on behalf of that enterprise. And uh, revenues in the enterprise are the source of repayment. So whenever you see a revenue bond, that means it's an enterprise fund. That borrowed the bond, you know, that sold the bonds and borrowed the money. And the revenues from that enterprise fund are the source of repayment. So that's an example to your earlier question.
This paper looks like Councilor, Vincent has a question.
Okay. Yeah, this is probably ridiculously elementary, but we recently had a situation where there was a, where, where there was. Uh, money left over from a prior project that we, that was applied to. Another project, would that fall within any of these definitions?
Yeah, so not necessarily. I mean, that's, again, I don't want to make this uh. Um, more complicated than it needs to be. So that's like residual like equity, right? Money left over afterward. And so a residual equity transfer of monies. To like another project, as you mentioned, as, as long as it's money that can be used for that other kind of purpose, right? So if that's a utility project and the utility project had money left over and the street project needed more money. You can't just transfer utility money uh, out into the street project. But if you had a street project that had money left over and another street project needed money. Then transferring that leftover money from that one street project to the other street project is certainly fine to do. Again, my advice to any administrators would be to make sure council's in the loop, right? So there's never any question about where the money's going, because that's the first way you can kind of. Um, you know, run afoul or begin to cause people to wonder, you know, what's happening. So, so doing it very uh, publicly, but, but using uh, money left over for a, a, another project where that money is. Is uh, permitted use for that project is, is a fine, fine thing to do.
Yeah, I think in the, in the case that I'm remembering, it was water to water, so.
Yeah, good example, good example. Yep. Yeah, so a residual equity transfer, right? Money left over at the end of a project. Yep. Any other questions? We're about to wrap up here, so I'm glad, I bet you're all, you know, looking forward to something else to do here, but uh. Oh, how much demystifying a budget can we really take in one evening? But um, we're wrapping up, as I said, the property tax uh. Hearing was imposed now several years ago. You have to have a hearing before you can adopt a property tax. It's in uh, RCWs, again, MRC will have the RCW reference for that for you. Um, I think it's RCW forty-seven, something if I remember right. But um, that uh, prior to that, you just adopted the property tax ordinance and you were good to go. Now law requires that you have to have a hearing on setting the property taxes in the structure for that hearing. And the ordinance is laid out in state law. Again, your finance staff will make sure that that happens according, according to Hoyle, so you don't get into trouble. In addition to that, there's two public hearings required for the budget. Now you can combine one of the public hearings for the budget with the property tax hearing, so you end up with a total of two required public hearings. I'm not against public hearings, I'm, uh, they're fine. They just don't serve much purpose at this late stage of the game, in my mind. Instead, what we used to do in Redmond and in Renton and other places I worked, because this was an idea that I thought had merit. So I brought it in at these different places, is we would have our first public hearing. Which was not consistent with the RC, not related to the RCWs at all. Our first public hearing would be before the midpoint of the year. Where we would have adopted our goals, we had laid out our calendar. And we would then have a hearing and advertise and, and let those that kind of, there were some that relied on the city for resources and stuff like that, some nonprofits. And let them know that we were going to begin to have a staff work on budget. And our hearing would be like in June, our first hearing. Again, that's not consistent with the RCWs because the RCW is pretty specific, you can see in the bottom bullet here. Uh, that your hearings need to be in, the first hearing needs to be no later than the mid-November. And again, we would uh, combine that with the property tax hearing. And then your second hearing is what the RCW is called, the final budget hearing. Um, and that has to be uh, before the first Monday in December, it can be continued, as you can see. That basically they're pre-structured in terms of when these hearings need to occur. And there's notice, there's notice requirements that your clerk will help make sure you abide by things of that nature as well. And these hearings are uh, again, required by law, they're, they're part of your adoption process. Um, and, and um, you can adopt the budget once you've had that second final budget hearing. You, once you've had that final budget hearing, at any point at that, you can adopt the budget. Uh, even at that same meeting, if, if you're all good to go. What you tend to do is have budget workshops that are occurring between this October date here. And this December date here, and these budget workshops are where you spend time with staff. Becoming familiar with the content of the budget, asking your questions, letting them make their presentations. Uh, about uh, again, what they've included and what they proposed, what maybe what their accomplishments were. Whatever form you want those presentations to take, depending on, you know, again, how much time you want to spend on them and things of that nature. Uh, but again, thinking about that, as you build the calendar, helps you. Create a discipline that will serve you well when this time comes, because you want to have some structure around this. Um, it can get away from you if you're not careful. And I remember attending a budget uh, workshop with the council uh, between Christmas and New Year's. And um, in a city that was fairly dysfunctional. And um, uh, and I told them that was the last one of those I was going to attend. Um, so uh, so you want to, again, give some thought to this so that you're not, don't set yourselves up for unnecessary grief. Um, the budget should be adopted at the fund level. And um, and as I said before, state law requires some sort of compensation schedule. So unless you have union contracts, which are already laid out, where your, all your compensation is for all your employees, then you don't need to worry about that. But um, typically in Washington, you often see, so the compensation schedule included in the, in the budget adoption as well. So that, that schedule I showed you earlier, that budget uh, that had the general fund and the special revenue funds and whatnot, uh, something like that certainly would work. Here's an example here, that's now very dated. But uh, but an example of uh, you know, we're adopting the budget and um, we've had our public hearings. And um, and the, whether you include the schedule as an attachment or in the body, whatever works for you is, is fine. And then monitoring, once you adopt the budget, then, you know, you need to monitor it on a going forward basis. In cities, you're required to monitor it at least quarterly, provide a court, the treasurer. The RCW calls for the treasurer, in this case, to produce a quarterly report. Um, and uh, the example there is one that I share from Redmond, that was the approach we used at Redmond, it had both a picture and that numbers as well. Um, and again, I, this is a result of a conversation with our council that talked about how do they like to receive this information, what works best for them. And we had council members who were better with certain, you know, ki- kinds of information versus others. And so they went about the numbers and the, and the picture. And uh, and here's the percent of the whole budget for this particular, the property tax in this case. And see the, the semi-annual property tax collections over the twenty-four months and whatnot, so. Succinct, uh, those uh, reports that run on for pages and pages. Uh, are not, in my uh, opinion, the most effective. Uh, so again, focus on major elements, uh, the minor elements are not going to make a difference. So focusing on those major ele- elements, make it succinct and do it timely. Um, I'm working with an organization now that reports uh, two months after, you know? The information's two months old by the time the council gets it. And um, in, in my mind, that's not timely enough. Um, I used to uh, in my work, I'd always do a monthly report. And uh, I'd share the report monthly with the council electronically, and then we'd present the, the report to the council at the meeting quarterly. Uh, but again, whatever works for you, that's the kind of thing you may want to consider in a financial policy. Then once we presented it to the council, then it was available on our website. So again, if you go to redmond dot gov slash finance, you'll find all this kind of stuff. Um, that we used to do when I was at Redmond a couple of years ago. Um, and uh, and you'll see some examples of ways it could be done. And there's lots of other examples as well. Um, but this is, this is what we used to do. Well, that's what I had to share. Are there uh, are there any other questions?
There we go, Councilor Manio.
Oh, I, I just comment, I, I know all the council members enjoy talking accounting as much as I do. So this is just a wonderful few hours. I know we all feel that way, right?
I, I was wondering, what are those subjects you have in your library that we could go through?
Oh, oh, well. Well, first we can start with Mike. Mike, Mike has a library at least as big as mine. We, we can enthral you guys for weeks, months.
I, I think you're going to get plenty uh, from your own staff here relatively soon, so yeah, that's to look forward to.
I think it's an excellent overview. We really appreciate that. So we're, we started, we're going to start the review of budget calendar coming up in a couple of weeks and, you know, hopping into the budget. Budget season, so we really appreciate your, and we'll be guiding us through what the process looks like.
Well, it's my pleasure. And uh, again, I've enjoyed working with the city over the years and I've got two other cities I'm working with the same month. Uh, because you're all in the same place, right? And you're on your calendars. So uh, I, I enjoy doing it and hopefully it's helpful and uh, that's what it's all about from my perspective.
Councilor, let's say.
Uh, uh, thanks, Mike. That was, you know, it's always.
Uh, thanks, Mike. That was, you know, it's always, even as a returning council member, good to have the refresh and. And remember the, the processes and what's, uh, um, you know, what's really important to, to be looking for as we go through this process. Is it possible to get a copy of your presentation as a reference document, uh, as we start going through just to have? Have things to look at, just to kind of keep, keep track of, of stuff?
Yeah, it's my pleasure. I've provided it to the staff there and I'm sure they'd be, uh, happy to pass it along.
We'll send it out to you. Any other comments? Well, we're eight minutes short. Early, so there you go. So.
Gift of time.
I could fill it up for a few minutes if you want.
Really appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and thank you, council and staff for attending. And have everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. Take care and less of everything too.
Thank you. You too.